That's when I start. That's when I start. Six twenty-nine and cents. This is the real time. That's the real time. That's not this is. Yeah. Yeah, that's bad. Good evening, everybody. We have a big crowd here, thank you. We had a long night. I don't think you're all here for everything we have tonight. We have six cases actually tonight. Welcome to the May second meeting of the Arapahoe County Planning Commission. We do have two items of general business that we need to dispense with at the beginning. We have minutes to approve from March twenty-first. We have members had the opportunity to review the minutes. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Staff moves. You have a second?
A second.
Rick seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved for March twenty-first. Now we have the minutes for April eighteenth. Again, do we have a motion for the minutes?
Our move, we accept the minute.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
A second.
Okay, so Mr. Raider moves and Mr. Saul seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved for April eighteen. Okay, Mr. Skinner, it looks like you have a full night ahead of you.
Do we?
So, we will start with case, and I guess we would take this together. Cases ASI one sixteen dash zero zero four and L sixteen dash zero zero six. Pawnee Daniels Park, three forty-five K transmission line, substation ten forty-one permit, and substation location and extent. Mr. Skinner, start your show.
Okay, so tonight's goal is to beat the record set by the Board of County Commissioners this morning, which had a five-hour hearing. We don't want to do that, but we will if we need be. First case is the ten forty-one application. And the second case, which we are now discussing together with two separate motions, is for the Pawnee Daniels location and extent. The ten forty-one is a matter of state in trust permit, which discusses beyond just the surface expression of the power line installation and the substation, the actual background, research, history, cultural resources. The binder that you have in front of you is sizable, so there's a lot of background on that. Location extent is largely the surface expression of the equipment, the lot, signs, poles. In this case, I don't believe there's any buildings and so forth. Staff takes ten forty-one cases extremely seriously. The process is longer on our end and more extensive than a typical case. A lot of time has been spent on it, reviewing the materials, back and forth with Excel. Staff finds at the end of the process that we feel they're ready to move forward. We had very little public comment, but I see we have lots of public. So I'm assuming they're probably here for the ten forty-one power line application. About the application, the substation is on a hundred-and-one acre parcel, generally located southeast of the intersection of Gun Club and East Quincy Avenue. The substation will be installed there. There are pictures of that in your location and extent plan, and I am pretty sure we'll see more from Excel tonight. The power line corridor is a bit of an interesting situation because while it is a continuous power line, as electrical wires tend to be, parts of it have been annexed into the city of Aurora, parts of it are remaining unannexed in unincorporated Arapahoe County. We made sure for the Arapahoe County portions that they noticed those things up, down, and sideways with signage for tonight. Any road that crosses that corridor has signs placed on it. We really did our best with the outreach for that. Staff is appreciative that Excel is placing these lines in a corridor they already own and already have lines in. We would rather see two lines in the same location as opposed to two lines carving different swaths across the landscape in different locations. That is largely the reason for the staff's basis for recommendation for approval. I have some things to hand out briefly.
While you're doing that, I just failed to note that we do have a quorum present and all members of the planning commission are here.
So the two things, excuse me, the two things that I just handed out, the first piece, which we'll just note, it says FYI sent from my iPhone at the top. I understand was delivered to us right before the hearing, and it is a letter from Tollgate Crossing Metro District, or an email rather. Staff hasn't had a chance to digest this. I'm gonna note that for the moment, and then while the applicant does their presentation, I'm gonna pour through this and see what I've got. We may hear from the Metro District Representative tonight. I don't know, I think it says they can't attend, but I'll go through that so I can speak to it as need be. The second packet I handed out has been a collection of materials in support that have been coming in. The South Metro Denver Chamber, the Aurora Chamber of Commerce, the Aurora Economic Development Council, and then one, two, three, four, five separate communications from people living in the area. Assuming homeowners, it isn't always specific, but they're emails or letters of support. I'm kinda waiting until I see people looking like they're comfortable reading, but I'm happy to wait. I mean, I'd like you to be able to ask any questions you have about these.
Could you confirm who has already approved? Iowa, the city of Parker has approved their section? What about Aurora?
Let's ask Excel that. I'm not sure where they're at with the Aurora approval, but yes, I do believe Parker has approved their portion of it.
Yeah, that was in the big book.
Mm-hmm. Yep, we'll see if Excel can tell us a little bit more where they're at with Aurora.
Because their Arapahoe County portion is much shorter.
It is, and having one without the other would, of course, not work. So we'll see how Aurora's progressing.
Thank you.
Thank you, though, good question. All right, I think we're gonna move on to the applicant's presentation then, if that's fine. Okay, well, let's have Derek from Excel come up. They have a presentation that'll be on the monitors.
Bill, can you turn some of these lights down that are on the screens? Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name's Derek Holcher with Excel Energy. The address is eighteen hundred Larimer Street, Denver, Colorado, eight zero two zero two. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the planning commission. Thank you for having us here. Before we get started, I do want to offer, I have hard copies of the presentation if anybody's available. Otherwise, we can just go off the screen here. Great. Well, as I said, excuse me, Bill, tee things up here. This is the Pawnee Daniels Park three forty-five KV transmission line project. I'm gonna start off with a little bit of project overview. I do want to say before we get started that we do have certain experts in the crowd that if I'm not able to address any of the questions raised by the commission or the public, that we can have them speak to address that issue. But to get started here, we're dealing with the construction of a new double-circuit three forty-five KV transmission line to connect our existing Pawnee substation, which is near Brush, Colorado, all the way down to Daniels Park substation, which is located just north of Castle Pines. In the address, Jane's question from earlier, we have received approval from this project by the town of Parker, which included five-point-four miles of transmission line, as well as Douglas County, which included nine-point-four miles of transmission line. The components that we're dealing with here at Arapahoe County are the New Harvest Mile Substation, which is located just east of our existing Smoky Hill Substation, as well as one-point-eight miles of new transmission line that will be constructed on single monopole structures between the Smoky Hill Substation and Daniels Park. And here we just have a map kind of showing the entire twenty-mile length of the project that is before the four jurisdictions that we've been working with. Up north here is the existing Smoky Hill Substation, Harvest Mile right next to it, and then this is the line coming south and then west over to Daniels Park. As you can see, the substation, I have another map later that shows us a little bit more detail, but we do have four jurisdictions here, Arapahoe County, then we go through Aurora, we hit Douglas County here, and then we get through the town of Parker, and then we're back into Douglas County again, all the way to Daniels Park.
Would you mind, for the benefit of the planning commission, to use that screen?
Oh, sure. Yes, thank you. Now, we're just gonna kinda get into some purpose and need for the project. This has been contemplated for over ten years now, and is a part of our Senate Bill one hundred portfolio of new transmission projects, and is a critical component to our Long Range System Improvement Plan. It's an overall project that will improve our reliability of our grid, creating a three forty-five KV backbone all the way from Brush, Colorado, down to Pueblo. It's gonna allow for the interconnection and delivery of new generation resources, and will also relieve the existing system in the Denver metro area. Here's the three forty-five system map that I had talked about. Here's Pawnee Substation up in the northeast part of Colorado, and the purple line represents our three forty-five KV system. This is the missing gap right here that we're before you today on, and then from Daniels Park, it picks up again and goes all the way down to Pueblo. So this project's gonna help close that gap and make the three forty-five KV backbone. Next here is just a map that I mentioned, the interconnection of new generation resources, which includes wind energy. And this is a map that just kinda displays some of the wind resources that we're anticipating to be added to the system. Again, we have the line from Pawnee down to Daniels Park. This substation right here is called Missile Site, and that's gonna be a key injection point for new generation. Once it gets into Missile, it's gonna tap into this line that we're talking about to help bring it through into the metro area and now way down south. So with these three bubbles right here, we're looking at close to seven thousand megawatts, which is a significant load for us. And speaking of load, we do have a resource balance in Colorado that is showing a potential need for additional generation up to approximately five hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, five hundred and thirty megawatts by twenty twenty-three. So this line will kinda help add that new generation on the system to try and close that gap that we're missing there. Just a little bit more about northeast part of Colorado, where we're seeing all this wind generation. It's also a significant place for natural gas development, including natural gas generation. There's prolific fields in that area, as well as existing pipeline infrastructure that will help kind of maneuver that energy around that part of the state and then into our transmission lines. Natural gas, again, is gonna be a key supply of energy for us moving forward in the future. It is economically favorable. It's a key to managing what we call our intermittency of renewable energy. So when the wind's not blowing and the sun's not shining, we have natural gas to supplement that. And it also has lower pollutants than greenhouse gases than our coal-fired generation. I'd like to talk a little bit here on a significant part of the need for the project. It's called the Rush Creek Wind Farm Project, which is just before the Arapahoe County Planning Commission and the Board earlier this year and last year, it received approval. Basically, it's a six-hundred-megawatt wind farm out in eastern Colorado that interjects into that Missile Site Substation that I showed earlier. The project's gonna be our lowest-cost wind energy, is gonna provide significant savings for our customers over the next twenty-five years. And as I mentioned, our project that we're here before you tonight also taps into that Missile Site to help deliver that clean, cost-effective wind energy to the system. Here's just a little map graphic that shows the Rush Creek Wind Farms down here in kind of central, eastern Colorado. There's two wind farms, there's the pink lines, the transmission line that will connect the two, that ultimately tie into the Missile Site Substation, and then this is our Pawnee to Daniels Park Transmission Line. So once it gets to this point, we need the three forty-five KV line to take us all the way into Daniels Park and then down south. I can talk a little bit about the project schedule and the timing. Back in April of twenty fifteen, we had to submit what we call a certificate of public convenience and necessity to the Public Utilities Commission. That is basically a document that the PUC deems the project needed. It's what we do on all of our larger transmission line projects, since we're regulated by the PUC, we need to have their blessing of the need before we can kinda move forward with the local jurisdictions. So once we got our CPCN, the Congress extended the production tax credit for what new wind projects with what we call a declining recovery schedule, but they did extend the in-service date for a hundred percent projects out to twenty twenty. So seeing the need to kinda take advantage of these tax credits, we then filed with the PUC in May of last year to accelerate the in-service date of the project, because when we got our initial CPCN, the PUC said we can't start construction until twenty twenty with an in-service date of twenty twenty-two. So we did file that with PUC, and we received approval this last October, which is kind of where we're now ending up with these new dates for the project. As far as the substation, we're looking to start this year, this summer, or sorry, this spring, with an in-service date of October of next year. And then the Transmission Line segment, we would start in early twenty nineteen with an in-service date before the end of the year in October of twenty nineteen. Just a little bit more here about advancing that in-service date. It's gonna help us take advantage of that tax credit, which will lock in the savings for our customers, and will help deliver that energy through our system and, I'm sorry, strengthening our system and our grid. As Bill mentioned, the ten forty-one process is pretty thorough and detailed. It is a large document that requires a lot of background and research. So I'm just talking a little bit about some of the planning process that we went through. We identified locations for the substation, as well as the transmission lines, and we recreated a broad study area to analyze those different routes that covers, like I mentioned, those four different jurisdictions. We did significant analysis of the land use and environment resources. We then identified some alternative corridors and reviewed possible opportunity constraints, which vary for anything from environmental to socioeconomic to geographic or geology features. And then we went out and did all of our fieldwork, went on the ground and tested all these things and researched everything. And along the way, we'd had a lot of agency coordination. We do everything from the state level up to the federal level. We coordinated with the Parks and Wildlife, State Historic Preservation, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and then also had some coordination meetings with Arapahoe County early on. Pretty extensive public involvement process. We've been going through that since about third quarter of twenty thirteen is when we started that effort. We had several open house meetings and did individual HOA meetings, and even individual residential meetings, so tried to cover our bases as much as we could at that. And then we did, we go out and then we do another opportunity constraints analysis, and then we select our preferred route and our preferred sites. As Bill mentioned, the project location is in an existing corridor. Back in the early nineteen sixties, we purchased enough property width-wise to contain two transmission lines, knowing that one would be installed initially, and then eventually we would need a second line in that corridor. The first line was installed in nineteen sixty-eight on that one side, leaving the other open. And as we talked about before, we have one-point-eight miles of this line within unincorporated Arapahoe County. Here's another map, real quick, that kinda shows from end to end what we're talking about in Arapahoe County. The blue line up here, the box, represents the Harvest Mile Substation. The blue line then represents the Transmission Line. As you can see, up until you get down to Smoky Hill Road here, you are in City of Aurora, the substation site being in Arapahoe County. Then once you get south of Smoky Hill Road, these are the two pockets that are located in Arapahoe County that were never annexed. And then we do have in-between here, a section of City of Aurora, and then we get into Douglas County at this point. Here's an aerial view of what we're proposing for the substation, the Harvest Mile. Gun Club Road is right here, Quincy Road is right here, and this is Harvest Road. So our proposed access is off of Harvest, and then you get down into the substation right here. What we're showing here is the ultimate build-out for the substation. Initially, we're only gonna have this bottom third, if you will, of equipment installed, but we show our ultimate plan so that we don't have to come back and then be before you again. We kind of address everything up front. So the Transmission Line from Missile Site will be coming in from the east here. That's the existing line is the green right here that you see that connects over to our Smoky Hill Substation. And then the blue lines will be coming in from the east as well, but then tying into the Smoky Hill Substation, coming back and then heading down towards Daniels Park. Here's a grading plan that we're looking at for the substation. In order to mitigate some of the visual effects of a substation, we are setting it essentially in a hole. As you can see, there's grading where we're cutting out a big, um, hole here. And with the excess material that we get from that, we're going to be constructing berms on the south and east side. Um, we have our detention facility up here. And here's a, uh, photo simulation of what the substation will look like. We're, this kind of shows the vantage point where the, the photo was taken. That's basically, um, on the edge of the Tollgate Crossing HOA here. And the city of, uh, or I'm sorry, the county of, uh, Arapahoe. This is the, basically the jurisdictional boundary right here between Aurora and Arapahoe County. Um, and there's about a 615 almost difference from the edge of the properties here to the fence of the substation. And this is what the photo simulation will look like with the proposed screening of the berms on the south. And then you can't see the east berm from this photo, um, vantage point, but this is the, the one from Tollgate Crossing. And then these are the transmission line structures that we're, um, that we're working with. The existing structures that are out there right now are this lattice tower right here that you're looking at. And then, uh, this is a good photo representation of what the new line will look like next to it. It's just a single steel monopole. This is, uh, kind of down, down near the Daniels Park Substation, just east of it. But the heights range from 100 to 150 feet. Pretty comparable to what's out there right now, kind of depends on the topography. And here we have a, a photo simulation of the transmission line corridor. This is actually in the City of Aurora here in between, um, uh, the section that splits Sorrel Ranch. Uh, here you see the existing conditions with the, uh, existing lattice structures. And then the photo simulation will show the new line dropped in. The new structures will be adjacent to the existing ones to help them blend in as much as they can instead of staggering them in between the existing structures. So as Bill mentioned, uh, there are certain approval criteria that go along with the 1041. I just wanted to point out a couple here. There's over 20 general approval criteria with the 1041 process. And, uh, our lengthy application is if you went through everything, we do meet all of those approval criteria. Here's a couple of sections from the comprehensive plan that I wanted to just highlight in as far as what we're complying with. Excuse me, this is under section four of that COT plan that addresses growth management. And ultimately the county will evaluate public, uh, utility facilities on a case-by-case basis. But then the county will allow public facilities to be cited throughout the county, except in sensitive development areas and riparian corridors, which this project does not cross either of those two. And then the, the last one here addresses public facilities and services specifically. The county, um, prefers that such utilities must locate near similar uses to minimize their visibility and be compatible with surrounding environment. And that's what we're doing here. We're using, utilizing an existing transmission line corridor and we're citing the substation next to an existing one. Uh, last slide here is we just have a, a quick history and kind of schedule. We already kind of covered some of this, but we have been doing the public outreach since, uh, 2013. Um, we got our PUC approval, uh, in 2015. We started our local land use permitting, uh, about this time last year. And we helped to wrap up by the third quarter of this year. And those are the, uh, in-service dates and construction start dates that we talked about before. So with that, uh, I would take any questions from the commission.
Okay. Before we go any further, I just need to point out to members of the planning commission, that in this packet of letters we just received is a letter from my boss. And if people have a concern about that, I have not seen it till tonight, just like none of y'all. And so I knew nothing different, but if members of the planning commission are concerned about that, I would recuse myself and not be involved.
I have no concern.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure people knew that, so. Okay. So there were two questions.
May I?
Yeah.
I do have questions. When I looked here and, um, read this, I saw different construction dates. And going back to the, the section on, um, plant and animal, you said that project activities will occur outside of the active season, um, as requested by Colorado Department of Wildlife. But yet your construction schedule here, here and some dates, I believe that moved on page 20 out of 56, say you're going right up against the time period that the Colorado Department of Wildlife did not want to working.
As far as activities for what, I'm, I'm sorry, that was outside of, the construction dates outside of what?
Wildlife.
Which wildlife in particular? I don't recall, uh, if there was a specific one.
There are two of them. The grouse and the mouse.
Oh, both are, uh, the people's metal jumping mouse. That, uh, we don't cross that habitat at all with this project in Arapahoe County at least. We do with, uh, the town of Parker. And, uh, we've coordinated with them on that side of the project as well. And, uh, the transmission line structures are outside of that riparian habitat zone. Um, so we won't be doing any damage to their habitat during construction. And I think the, the way the project is phased out, we can, um, be in one area at a certain time and then not be there again for another couple of months. So it's going to be phased out, so we won't be i- interrupting any kind of, uh, wildlife habitat.
Okay, so this construction start that you have up here is just for the Arapahoe County part of the line?
No, it's for the entire project, yeah. So the line itself will be getting started in early 2019 with an in-service by October 2019.
We're not voting on that part.
No, but I, I feel I have to ask questions about what appear to need to be inconsistencies in the material that we received. And can, can I ask another question? Could you tell me about the, um, the, the contact that you had with the homeowners associations? I think the letter we were presented with tonight, um, indicated that there had been little contact or, or no contact with Tollgate Crossing. And also, um, the email from Lynn Reynolds?
Correct. Uh, the, um, the, the public outreach efforts that we did included a total of seven different open house meetings. And all the residents in Tollgate Crossing were made aware of those public open house meetings. We also did two separate specific HOA meetings with Tollgate with their, their board. And the entire community was invited to those to attend. Um, the last one, I believe, was in August of 2016. Since then, we've, uh, also, uh, worked with one individual of the HOA to conduct EMF readings, uh, in the field. And we've worked with that person as well as one of our EMF experts to come up with the summary of those, those findings. And, uh, made that available to, to the public. So, um, I think we've made a, a pretty good, uh, effort to work with those folks. Uh, I know we've made several pieces of information available at those meetings as well as on our project website, including documentation about EMF studies that have been done, um, property values, um, all sorts of information. We keep that project website updated continually. So outside of that, I think that covers kind of our extent of deal with Tollgate Crossing specifically.
Thank you.
Dan, can I speak?
We're going to have a public hearing and then people can speak during the public hearing.
I got a question.
I got a question.
Okay. In this gentleman's letter, uh, stating that they didn't, about Tollgate Creek and all that. He says that the proposed power lines along the Gull would extend up 150 feet above the surrounding Doug Hill area, which is up to 6,000, 6,050 feet in elevation. And he says this means the power lines would extend up to 6,200 feet in elevation. Buckley Air Force is located at 5,700 foot elevation. And the power lines are in the flight, flight path. Can you address that?
Well, like I said, there, there is an existing transmission line up there as well too, so Buckley Air.
Same height.
It's same height, yeah. Buckley Air Force is aware of these lines. They're aware of our plans for the new lines and they are a sufficient distance away from the corridor that they shouldn't im- impose any kind of.
Thank you.
You have the opportunity to read this letter for?
Just a couple of minutes before I stepped up here, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Sure. Well, these are the same issues that we had discussed with them at the, at the meetings and, um, provided responses to.
My question is, are the alternative routes been permanently eliminated? Because it seemed like on your map, if things were moved further to the east, the impact on existing homeowners would be negligible. Are, are those off the table for good?
Well, as far as the application in front of you tonight, they are. We were submitting, uh, the application under our preferred route or proposed route, which is the existing corridor. Uh, the thing with the alternative route that you were talking about going out east, um, in, in sections, it does avoid, um, residential homes. But then as you get further south, because you have to get from point A to point B, we, we do run into other residential developments. Um, that's the difficult part about citing a transmission line, especially in a heavily congested area like the metro area. In order to get from point A to point B, it's, it's, it's very difficult. That's why the use of an existing corridor is, uh, what we believe is the most cost-effective way and the most feasible way.
And both lines will always be there parallel, parallel to each other the whole length?
Correct, yeah. I think one of the questions in the, the letter was that the existing facilities are 40 to 50 years old, nearing the end of their useful life. And we have transmission lines that are similar to the existing one out there that are over 100 years old, so. We don't believe that they're near their, end of their useful life.
Oh.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, so one of the concerns that, uh, was raised in this letter is about the maintenance of the right-of-way or the easement. Can you tell me, you know, since you own it, I imagine you probably have a maintenance plan for that easement?
We do, correct. We have a, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
We have a, like a vegetation, vegetation management, um, sector of the company that kind of handles maintaining all of our right-of-ways across the state. Part of that is, I know they talked about the, the prairie dog situation. And, um, that is something that, uh, as a company, we have, um, kind of taken a neutral stance on. We offer, if other folks would like to come into our property, we've issued access agreements, have them coming in, relieve the, the problem. But with it being such a sensitive topic, either way, uh, people for it, people against it, we, we tend to stay neutral on that. But that is something that we've granted permission for folks to do previously. And, uh, the Tollgate HOA, Tollgate Crossing HOA is in the City of Aurora. Uh, we have not filed an application with City of Aurora yet. Uh, we're looking to do that here, um, first part of this month here, now that we're in the May. And we've been working with the City of Aurora on a mitigation plan that addresses some of these issues. And, uh, that has just kind of been finalized over the last couple of weeks. So we haven't been able to relay that information to some of the Tollgate Crossing members. But that is something that we have been working with the City of Aurora pretty extensively the last couple of months here. You bet.
I have no question. The proposed substation is, is west of Harvest. Can you speak to that or no? We're doing both at the same time, so.
Yes, the substation is west of, uh, Harvest Road.
How close is your boundary to Murphy Creek floodplain, do you know?
Yes, on this, uh, let's see, Murphy Creek is this drainage right here that runs through. There is a 100-year floodplain associated with that, but all of our, uh, improvements are outside of the, the floodplain.
Above the floodplain. So what, uh, what kind of, uh, protection are you going to build into the substation that will withhold a, a capacitor transformer leak from going offsite? Is that the burned area or?
That, that'll play into the part of it too. But with the transformers, uh, in the substation, those, um, in our experience, very rarely fail at all. If they do, we have, uh, spill, spill prevention and control countermeasures that are in place at each substation. Essentially a, uh, a pit around the substation. So if it does leak, then it doesn't go offsite, it stays onsite. And if, if for some reason a leak did occur, we would know about it immediately and be onsite to keep it from going offsite.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? We should go to the public hearing. Okay. Now we will go to the public hearing. Now is the opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission. We do have a list of people who've signed up to speak. Some have said they would like to speak, some we will just identify for the record that you were opposed, uh, cause that's what the whole list is. And, but anyone else who would like to speak that is not on the list, you will get that opportunity after we go through the list. If you have any questions, you know, Excel will be taking notes and they, at the end of the present, at the end of the hearing, they will be able to address all those questions that you have. So we will start with Lynn Reynolds. And when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. If, is anybody, by the way, here representing the Metro District or the HOA?
I'm with Metro District HOA, but I'm not, uh, an officer or.
Okay, so you're not representing.
The letter that you read is from, uh, Brian Matisse, who is the Secretary Treasurer of Metro District, is an attorney. And he unfortunately didn't get the word about the meeting tonight, which a lot of people didn't get because it's on a very obscure sign on the side of the word, the road that you drive down. It's kind of blurry and the letters are distorted and a lot of people missed it. So we tried to get the letter, the word out, but we just weren't in time for him. So he's in New York tonight.
And you have three minutes.
Okay. I think what's missing from some of the discussion that we have here is the people involved. It hit me particularly when you talked about Parker passing, uh, the resolution to allow the power lines. Uh, there were five, I think, city council members there who voted in favor of it. There were people crying all over the room. There were hundreds of people in that room and they were crying. And there was, uh, the, the city council members had already made up their minds and they did vote in favor of it. But it wasn't that easy. It wasn't Parker was all in favor of this. They're very ugly. We accepted them. Those of us that moved into this neighborhood, these neighborhoods, we love our houses, we love our neighborhood. It's beautiful there. The towers are ugly. The ones that we have are ugly, but we accepted those when we moved there. We should not have to accept other towers too. We don't know a lot about the safety. There is some inferences over the past historically that, uh, towers cause more child, instances of childhood apnea. There's no proof of that. I don't have any proof of that. But there is enough smoke that I, I would be a little bit worried about it. My grandson goes to the elementary school. I'm a little worried, there's a tower right there. There's going to be another one right there. There's a children's park within 50 feet. There's going to be two big towers there. Whether it's safer or not aesthetically, we would like for Excel to bury these lines, to not put more towers up. We know they can afford it. We know it's more expensive. But by our calculations in 2015, by what we read, Excel's earnings and profits were 944 million. Of that 477 million was earned in Colorado. Last year in 2016, they made a billion, $123 million. That's a lot of money. And that's a lot of money that some of which could go to help us. Our district is even offering to help defray some of the costs of bury, burying the lines. This particular gentleman who wrote this, he offered to speak with, um, Excel about our Metro District paying part of it, um, but they never got back in touch with it. So I, I think my time might be up, but I appreciate you listening. But just remember the people. These are people's homes. These are people's, this is what people have worked for. And that substation is backing up. You can't see on that map to homes, a whole lot of homes with nothing in between the substation. We also had a leak on a substation years ago. We had a leak and it was, it was pretty, I, I wasn't there then, but I heard about it and I know about it. And, um, this is not safe for this, this kind of an area where there's so many homes and so many people. It's just not safe. I'm sorry if another neighborhood might be affected down the road, but why don't we just bury them or ask them to bury them? Let us pay part of the cost if we have to.
Any questions?
I have a question. So if I understand this right, I'm a little slow, but the existing right-of-way. So if I understand this right, I'm a little slow, but the existing right of way of power lines are there.
They're there.
And they're not going away?
They're not going away. But they're going to squeeze another one right beside it.
Well, I know, I got that. But what's the difference? If you've got two or one, they're there, they're both ugly.
Well, the second one makes it twice as ugly. It looks like an industrial area. It looks like a, if you ride through our neighborhood and the area of the substations and the Excel towers, you see that it doesn't look like a neighborhood, it looks like an industrial area. And it's getting worse, the more things that are being added.
So are you asking them to move, build a new, all-new, or just bury?
Bury them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ken Reynolds, who does not want to speak but is opposed to this project. Rodney Smith also does not want to speak. Now, if anyone's changed their mind, let me know. Rodney Smith is opposed to the project. Jason Mccano. Or Nikano. And state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Jason Mccano. I live 5152 South Eaton Park Street, Aurora, Colorado, eight zero zero one six. I apologize, I did my best to get my notes together as quick as I can. So I'll make this as quick, because I know we've got a convinced amount of time we're allowed to speak. Unfortunately, a lot of our fellow community members cannot make it tonight. I mean, there's a lot of pages out there between Facebook and other community pages where a lot of people were concerned. But obviously, with working requirements and everything else, it makes it hard for a lot of us to get out. One of the reasons why I'm in the tire I am, so. There's a lot of concerns and a lot of issues. And then, of course, I tried to take notes tonight, as we heard from Excel. This school was brought up. That's the number-one concern is there is a school there. What was not brought up was the brand-new middle school that is also being built. It's going to be within close proximity to the area. That was voted on last November for the community to approve that. And our tax levy has also went up to get that school built. That's one of them. Another thing that we're looking at is Tollgate Crossing alone has roughly one thousand twenty-two homes. And I'm sorry, I'm not convinced off six letters that that means the vast majority of the community is okay with this project. Now, aesthetics aside and everything else, wildlife is another concern. Most of us grew up in this state, we love this state, we love our wildlife. And it was already brought up by one of the council members that there are some dates that coincide with, you know, some of the species. Now, the representative, and I might have missed it, only addressed one of two that were asked about. So that also brings up issues. The substation, the proposed, from what I can see from the back on the picture, another thing that wasn't addressed is there is actually a water substation or a utility substation that's already within close proximity as well. So some of us are definitely wondering what that entails for that that's already there. It's right off of Harvest as well. As far as it goes, I tried to write down some dates, so I apologize if I'm going to speak on the dates. Tollgate's been around for a considerable amount of time. It was about three-fourths of the way done when we moved in in 2012. As I was stated before, yes, we did assume a little bit of the understanding that there was some existing lines. That was understandable. Now, from what I understand, stood from the Excel representative, they had explained that apparently those lines were there around 1968, if I caught the date correctly. Now, when any of us bought a home from Tollgate, we got a huge stack of paperwork, very, very large stack of paperwork that told us about everything within the area between Adam, the previous Larry bombing field that was out back towards that area. Everything that you could possibly imagine was in that stack, minus anything that told us that there could have potentially been power lines put in, get along a second set or anything else. So the thing that kind of frustrates us from a homeowner perspective is the fact that if all those, including Buckley, DIA, and everything else's flight plans, could be put into paperwork and put into that packet so we could sign acknowledging that we understand this when we bought our homes, why is it we never got one for Excel? I'm sorry, but if it's truly a community outreach, then that's something that could have been put into that packet when we bought our homes, so at least we knew this is the responsibility we're taking on. Another thing that was brought up was these quote-unquote "tax break," I'm sorry.
You could wrap it up.
Yes, sir. Another thing that was brought up was these quote-unquote "tax breaks" for Excel. The previous speaker had brought up the fact that, yes, Excel is a business. You know, we all understand business and everything else. And they were talking about bringing value and everything else to the community. Well, some things that were brought up in a few of the public forums were things like buyouts for the community, for people that would like to go at this point in time and everything else. But the simple question remains, if they're getting such a break, why were we not offered or why are we not being offered either, you know, a break on our bill or something else within these communities that are going to be affected? So, I mean, those are just some of the notes. I'm sorry, I try to go as quick as I can. But like I said, the main ones are obviously the school, the new school, the wildlife. You know, they're obviously going to be getting a lot of breaks and money and everything else. And we're getting tall, tough, kiky cookies, we just have to suck it up and drive on. So, sorry, a whole lot, I went as quick as I could, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Chris Gordon is opposed, and I don't know if Chris wanted to speak or not.
I just have a question. I wanted to ask the guys. Like, the commissioner asked a question earlier about.
And state your name and.
I'm sorry, my name is Chris Gordon, two four two five two East Glasgow Circle, Aurora, Colorado. And I'm a resident of Townes Reach, and there's things right in my backyard. I appreciate the commissioner's question earlier about the alternate route. Somehow, I'm not sure that alternate route was really ever seriously considered. But I did have a question for the guys. If it's been approved by some of the other commissions, is this really not a foregone conclusion in terms of whether it can be buried or remain aerial? And I don't know the answer to that question. But we, you know, the gentleman spoke earlier about the benefits of using the existing Excel property and running along the same path. For us homeowners that live out there, we might be okay with that if they drop it out of the ground. So we want it buried. And so that's, and I don't know if part of it can be buried or all of it has to be buried, and what those implications are.
Thank you. Dan McKee is opposed and does not want to speak. Richard and Linda Stifel are opposed and do not.
And I do want to speak.
Okay, then come forward.
Could you bring up the proposed route you had with the stations? My name is Richard Stifel, two four six five Houston Wagon Trail Avenue, Aurora, Colorado, eight oh one six. While he's bringing that up, there were a couple of issues the commission brought up. That, that's it. Can you show DeGaulle on there? I think DeGaulle is running.
Yeah, DeGaulle, kind of dead ends, right at this point, it goes straight south.
Right. Which one is it? This one. My house is right there. When we first bought our house, there were, in fact, power lines behind it. They were wood. They ran the same length of all of these, but they were all wood. Four years ago, Excel came in, tore all of those out, and put in the toppers. They put in a huge tower, excuse the hands, right there. One of their megatones, I don't know what you call them. They replaced a fair amount, running down the goal. This area over here is nothing but farmland or unmaintained right of way. When we moved out there, we did not count on anything being in here. We knew about the lines. We lived with the upgrade on the power grid four years ago. It should have been enough to take care of almost all your stuff. We were never informed of any of the new three forty-five K that had to come through here. Over here, vacant land, Arapahoe County Fairgrounds, vacant land, all of which are accessible and all still owned by the conservancy that owns this area here. The water treatment plant is right there. There are water irrigation lines running all the way through there, along your easement. And now you're going to drop this right on top of that area. You may have put out notices to the residents that were woefully insufficient. I've been on both sides of this, your side and this side. I understand trying to deal with Excel to take power lines underground. We were told then, if they're above ground, they stay above ground. If they go underground, they have to stay underground. They'll never bring them underground. Never happened. Why? It's too expensive. Cuts into their budgets, cuts into their profits. Taxpayers be damned. They don't really care. It's up to you guys to defend us. And this project has been terribly communicated, has many more alternatives than what we're being presented with. But this is being rammed down our throat, three years ahead of when we thought it was ever going to hit. This wasn't supposed to start till 2020. Now I find out it's going in in May? That hasn't been communicated. That's a first. Thank you, guys. I know I'm beating a dead horse, but you guys gotta do something about this. That's all I can say.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you had your choice, where would you move it to?
I don't want to move. I love that house.
No, no, not you, the substation.
Oh, the substation. Sorry, brother. There's enough property out in this area, along these same corridors, that this substation, I understand what all of this is doing here. I understand trying to get on, these lines run all the way down here, they run all the way over to here. I've seen them. They go forever. You want to hook into these, there's a whole lot of places you can put a substation. It doesn't have to be right here, and there's nobody over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas and Myra.
Ensmen.
Thank you. Thank you for the help. I'm opposed to the project and do not want to speak.
I just say just bury the lines.
Ron and Brenda Haria are opposed and do not want to speak. Lisa Clark is opposed and would like to speak.
I'm Lisa Clark. I live at two four three five five East Roxbury Circle, Aurora, eight zero zero one six. And I just want to say real quickly, I pay almost $5,000 a year in property taxes to live where I live. So, just to lay that out. I have the existing set of power lines directly behind our home. When we moved in, again, we did not know that there was any sort of existing easement, that there was a master plan for that area, that there was going to be any additional power line put in. Nothing, we were told, nothing. We've lived there for not quite two years. I'm very familiar with what happened in Parker and Douglas County. There were people up there, almost actually over 2,000 people signed a petition opposing the power line project through Parker and Douglas County. Unfortunately, they were not heard. I would say that, that for us, we would like the lines buried. I know that it sounds like, oh, well, you already have an existing power line structure there, what's the difference? There is a difference. It creates an industrial area, the look of an industrial area. And we are not an industrial area, we are a neighborhood. If the substation and the power lines have been there for thirty-plus years, the neighborhood has absolutely changed in that time. It is not an open space anymore. It is neighborhoods, it's communities. And all we're doing is adding to this sort of industrialization of the community. I feel horrible for the people in Tollgate, because right now, when you drive by, you almost don't even notice the homes, because all you see is power lines and substation. So we would like them buried. I did speak to our city councilperson this morning, and she advised me that the city of Aurora will not have necessarily any approval process for this, because it's grandfathered in or part of a master plan, and so it will just go through an administrative process. So basically, all we have are you guys and the county commission to either protect us or let this go as is. I would beg you, if you are going to let this project go through as is, that you consider, at the very least, making sure that that substation is in some way hidden from view as much as possible, that trees are planted in these communities, that trees are planted along that easement, so that we can maintain the sort of natural setting that we bought into when we bought our homes. Where we live is a beautiful area, but if we keep up this development, 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 and again, impacting the look of the area, it's just sad. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So where you live, it's in back-of-your-home?
Mm-hmm.
So if they put a thirty-foot tree, how would you see through it? If it's at the first level, or would you go upstairs to?
We have, we live in a walkout, so we're actually three stories. Directly behind our home, we actually, when we bought our house, we thought that the area behind us was a combination of the power lines and open space. Because we actually have quite a large area behind us. There's a creek, it's very hilly, there's actually a walking path back there. So, you know, it kind of, this sort of natural setting kind of tones down that industrial look of the tower, which is why I would ask for sort of something to be done if we cannot bury the lines to soften the industrial look. And I would beg for that absolutely for the people in Tollgate. Because, I mean, if the county can do anything and if Excel can do anything to soften the look of the towers and the substation.
So are you north of Tollgate? I'm trying to figure where you.
I guess we're sort of south, yeah. We're along, yeah, I live in Townes Reach, so I live near the corner of Aurora Parkway and Arapahoe Road. Yeah, yeah. Hey.
So you're in Aurora?
I am in Aurora, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Wilk, Walk?
Oh, that's me, I, if you don't mind, I would like to speak.
Okay.
Just a second, let me state my name.
Yes, state your name then.
Yes. So my name is David Wilks. I'm at two four two six nine East Brant Avenue, and that's in Aurora. And the slide that was up here earlier that showed the path with the, you know, current view and then the additional, the proposed addition, that's my backyard. And, sorry, as you can see, in my backyard, I have a tower already. And echoing what everybody said, I moved into here knowing it was there, hoping that, you know, not realizing that I would double up on those towers. I understand that we're growing huge, and we need electricity. And so I'm also on board with the idea of understanding we need the lines, but I really encourage us to bury these things. I don't know if you saw that picture of that kind of winding path down there. In the summer, that is, you know, a giant pile of weeds until they come in and hack it down in the middle of the summer, and it just kind of sits there. You know, speaking to what women who was before me mentioned, beautifying things could go a long way, or at least some way. But, you know, I am. But, you know, I am opposed as it stands now, would love to see it buried, and all else fails, try to beautify it a little bit. So, that's all I got.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I'm just curious, so when you were in negotiations to buy your home, were you ever told by the real estate people that in your backyard, where the power lines go, is an XL easement? And they can put whatever they want to in there?
Yep.
You were told that?
Yep.
That they could put more things in?
I don't know if my real estate agent told me, but I,
You probably were.
I invested, I read this project. I know it's, I've known that it's been out there as a possibility. That doesn't change the fact that I would prefer it to be underground.
Exactly.
But yeah, I rolled the dice, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to clarify, so you did know that this likely was going to happen?
I saw the plans. So, I don't, I wouldn't say that I knew that this was going to happen, but like, I saw that picture when I moved in. I moved in after Soro Ranch. We were a second homeowner. So, it was just a few years ago. But yeah, I did not know for sure that it was going to happen. I've been hoping it wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not addressed the planning commission who would like to speak? Then come forward.
I'd originally stated I didn't want to speak. Rodney Smith, 24365 East Wagon Trail Avenue, Aurora. I live in Tollgate here, basically right about a little ways where they want to bury that. It's, we've got a full community now. Got a lot of kids, talking about putting middle school in, eventually going to put a high school in next to middle school. These new poles that they're putting up, I mean, I've lived out here since the beginning, since it started. As he stated, there were wood poles out there originally. They came in, put the new little aluminum towers in. Aluminum towers are terrible. When it gets windy out, starts whistling, that wind starts whipping around that aluminum, all you hear is whistling, drives all the dogs crazy. Used to have quite a bit of wildlife that would roam around, coyotes, deer, they're gone for the most part. They pop up every once in a while. But there's not, and as you stated, ma'am, you didn't see where they put any of the other alternative, the two other alternative routes that they had planned to put out. There's no reason why this can't go on the other side of the fairgrounds where nobody's going to be affected by that. It sounds like they've already got everything set, how they want to roll it, but again, they've taken that off. Even when you go to the meeting, I attended the one in Parker, they pretty much were set a while back that alternative A is the way they wanted to go. They didn't care about alternative B or alternative C, which personally, C should be the way it goes, where it's out of the way. No one's going to be bothered by that, for the most part, I wouldn't think. Don't know what the cost associated with that would be, and even if they want to bury that, that would be a great idea for the new addition. So, pretty much all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You're not allowed to speak twice. So, is there anyone else who would like to address the planning commission? So, yes, ma'am. You did not speak yet, correct?
No.
Okay. And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kayla Nacano. I live at 5152 South Eaton Park Street, Aurora 80016. Basically, the only thing that I wanted to say is when the XL representative had spoken about how he had communication, how there's been a lot of communication that's been put out to the people that live there in the communities. If I'm not mistaken, the last meeting, the meeting that we had, there were 16 questions that were asked, only which about seven were answered. There has been hardly any communication when it comes to this situation. I mainly am concerned about the school that's right across the street from the power lines. My son attends there. Our whole neighborhood's children attend there, and it is scary, even though there is not 100% scientific evidence that proves that power lines may be dangerous to people. It's scary to think about that your kids are going five years at an elementary school where there could be risk to their health. Not to mention there has been some studies done on animals, and if you think about it, if any of you guys have dogs or cats, they're at your house 24/7. They don't get to leave to get away from the electromagnetic, magnetic waves that are being cut off. So, my pets are a huge part of my life as well, and I'm worried about their safety as well as my children, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Hello and thank you. My name is Chris Clark. I live at 24355 East Roxbury Circle. My home, it directly in my backyard are those towers. I know that they were there when we bought the place. I had no issue with that. We have seen some failures of XL's ability to maintain the right-of-way directly behind us. XL has made a lot of money selling the right-of-way. They're now on a one-year project. They've been installing gas lines. We have a sewer line rupture that flooded into the creek. So, they're making a lot of money on selling these ancillary services running through there, but they're not maintaining them. They have every right to do what they want in their right-of-way. And there's, we're frankly powerless to tell them they can't put another tower in there. I get it, they own the land. But I'm asking if they're going to own that land and maintain that land that they do so. And I know they said they have somebody who comes out and maintains the grasses, and they have a whole division that does that. They come out once a year, and they're only focused on the little bit of area that's directly underneath the lines to prevent a fire. Generally, they do a big circle cut here where the lines dip down, and they go to the next dip down and they cut a circle. They're not maintaining it. They've had a plastic barrier in place going on three years that runs from Aurora Parkway to, it parallels Arapahoe. It parallels Aurora Parkway up to Arapahoe. They've done nothing to remove it. They're not maintaining it. So, I ask that if we are going to, if they're going to be going into that area and they're adding additional services, that more effort is maintained, is put forth to maintain that area. I'd like them to bury it. I know that as a business, they're a for-profit company, that's not in their best interest. Our community has grown up around these existing power lines. When they first put them in in 1968, there wasn't a home inside out there, okay? I'm asking that they seriously consider their Plan C. Their Plan C involves running through land where there is nothing right now. Let it go around us and stop adding into that corridor there. We have a really condensed corridor. And as I look and I saw the pictures, and I understand they left a path of X amount of feet to put another pole, and I understand that these poles are going to be placed in the exact same spot as existing poles are directly adjacent. When you come to that area of Arapahoe and Aurora Parkway, they have no choice but to somehow cross over each other. I don't know if there's a plan for that because the only other way now would be to put it in the creek. I'm not sure how you get another one side by side in those areas right now. So, it's just a little one-block area where you'll have to have at least two poles that I see no way without being in the street or in the creek how you add a second pole. So, I'd like to hear some feedback on what that looks like as well. And I understand, and I also like to hear feedback on if they do move forth with the poles, what color are they going to be? I see pictures of the silver ones, but what we keep hearing is about these brown poles going in, not here today. But we've been hearing from other people that the poles are brown. So, I just want clarification in front of the committee here on what color those will be. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you prefer the brown poles?
No. I don't think anybody in our neighborhood prefers brown poles.
No, we only allow one time. You can ask someone else to ask your question. Because you can talk to XL after, I'm sure they're going to be around, so. You know what? Okay.
Bill Skinner for the Planning Division. The question was, is there an opportunity to submit or bring more correspondence into the discussion? We, the 1041 application does move from the Planning Commission onto the elected Board of County Commissioners from this, from here. So, I said there's two parts in play tonight. One is the 1041 application, which is a larger system-wide look, and a specific surface expression in the location and extent. Location and extent stops here tonight. It's approved or denied. But the 1041 does move on to the elected commissioners.
Now, is there anyone else who would like to address the planning commission that has not?
Yes, hi. My name's Lorenzo Torres. I used to reside in 24641 East Layton Place, and I am now recently about to purchase a home here in Wheatlands, 25101 East Aberdeen Drive. You guys have the diagram of the power lines that are going from Harvest, and there's our alternative route, which is in yellow on the XL diagram. And I wanted to see how far back that was going to be from where it says Aurora Reservoir subdivision, and if you guys were really considering going back behind that like little green belt or that little hill on that area. So, if you guys have that diagram, maybe we could, maybe take a look and see where those power lines are actually going.
Are you talking about one of the alternative routes?
Yes, correct.
We're only dealing with the.
The existing. Okay, gotcha. Okay, so those won't be canceled then?
All right, we are not looking at any alternatives.
That's, that's all I just wanted to look at. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, is there anyone else? Saying none, we will close the public hearing and bring this back so that XL can address your questions if you can make it as brief as possible, because I'm sure there'll be more questions from the planning commission.
Sure, absolutely enough. I think I did a good job of trying to catch up, capture everybody's questions here, but if I happen to miss one that you guys are aware of, let me know, please. Just kind of starting down the list here, I guess. As far as the notification, at least for the hearing tonight, we complied with all of the Arapahoe County notification requirements. We notified everybody adjacent to the substation and the transmission line corridor plus 500 feet. So, we went out and covered that entire area. Going back to the public, open houses that we held during the first round, I think we notified over 8,000 people, including entire HOAs. And in the second round, we did over 6,000 people, same thing. We notified individual residents as well as specific HOA boards that then disseminated that information out to their residents. As far as getting notice of future plans, unfortunately, in Colorado, it's not a law that Realtors have to disclose all that information about future plans for transmission land projects in this case. But even up until now, and in the last couple of years, we've been receiving several calls from residents asking, knowing that we own that property, they ask, what are your future plans for that? We're going to be buying in the area, we want to know what you have planned for that. And we've had this plan since 1968, so we're able to then share that information with those folks so that they can make their buying decisions. As far as the childhood leukemia question on EMF readings go, I might defer to some of our experts, but I do know we did the EMF readings with Tollgate Crossing and specifically in the area near the school that everybody's having, talking about. Existing EMF levels from the line, once you get outside the corridor, they drop to nearly zero. And then the school then is an additional 300, 400 feet from the right-of-way. So, then those EMF levels from the existing line are going to be negligible. They're going to get more EMF inside the school than they are from the transmission lines. And then with the design of the new transmission line, it is designed in a way to actually cancel some EMF. And that is a portion of the ruling that the PUC gave us on our necessity. They also look at levels for EMF and noise, and we follow the state statute for those levels. We're actually below those levels considerably. As far as burying the lines go, that is a question that we get, what we had in Douglas County and in Parker as well. Obviously, the cost is 40 times what it is to put overhead line in. There's also safety reliability issues. If a fail happens on an underground transmission line, it takes much longer to isolate the problem and to make the repairs. So, the lights are going to be out longer, and the costs to make those repairs are much more significant than an overhead line as well.
Have a question?
Yes.
A buried line, how much, what's the percentage of loss versus overhead lines? Because they're underground, you're going to lose.
Oh, with the EMF levels?
No, power.
Oh, power. I don't think there's any loss in the power from putting an overhead versus underground. As far as the rating of the line or how?
No, the efficiency of delivering power underground versus overhead lines. Does the underground power lines create a greater loss of power than the overhead lines? I was just curious. That was a reason or?
Yeah, I might have to defer to a transmission engineer for that.
I'm Danny Pearson, Transmission Engineer, Public Service, 1800 Laramore Street. Yes, the losses are compensated for by using a larger diameter conductor. The cable that we would use, we'd be using three cables per phase versus the two cables per phase that we'd have for the overhead line. The cables are probably, let me think, they would be around a, the, the overhead conductors are a 1272 KC mill conductor, which is about 1.434 inches in diameter. The underground cables, each of the cables will be around a 2,000 KC mill, which would be about, let me see, 1.2, roughly two inches in diameter. So, they're maybe two and a third and a half again is large. So, that's how we make up for the differential, the heat losses and that type of thing.
Thank you.
And then I wanted to touch a little bit more on the burying of the transmission lines, as far as costs go. In order to justify these costs, we'd have to go back to the PUC and get approval from them in order to put it underground. And having a viable overhead option, they would more than likely deny that. There was talk about kind of combining the HOA and have them pay for putting the line underground. That would be the difference in cost from putting it overhead to underground, which I think I got some figures here. This is just the total cost numbers that we're looking at. So, Route A is the existing transmission line corridor. We're looking at 48.6 million to construct that. And with Route C, we also have to, which is the alternative route that we looked at, that has no existing right-of-way. We'd have to acquire a right-of-way for that. So, that's an additional cost of a total of 123.2. So, as far as getting the HOA to pay for the difference, we'd be open to that, but it's significant cost. It would be the difference of putting it from underground to overhead, or I'm sorry, yeah, underground from overhead, which is 40 times the cost of the 48.6 million.
So, you're saying it's a billion dollars? It's more than a billion?
I know, it'd be, yeah, it is. Be significant.
Yeah.
And we're open to that if that's.
The neighborhood wants to pay a billion dollars or more.
And unfortunately, my community relations manager and myself have not been notified of wanting to continue discussions about paying for them, having them pay to put underground, but we're definitely open to that. And I apologize if they were unable to get in touch with somebody, but I can share my information afterwards.
Question. So, is that total cost for this portion that we're looking at tonight, or is that the total cost of connecting out in Daniels Park and?
This is for the entire right-of-way, correct? So, we're looking at. This is for the entire right away, correct. So we're looking at, in Aurora, we're dealing, I'm sorry, in Arapahoe County, we're dealing with 1.8 miles. And like we said earlier, this is going to be going in front of the City of Aurora. So today, I think we're just dealing specifically with, on incorporate Arapahoe County. We are dealing with Aurora on a lot of these issues, including the mitigation and maintenance of the right away. So that's going to be discussed and handled with the City of Aurora.
So then build one mile underground cost what?
One mile of underground versus one mile of overhead. I believe one mile of overhead is of this voltage, about 1.5 million. 35 to 40. Right, if you're thinking 1.5 versus 40, then they're paying for 38.5 million. I'm sorry, let me get to the list here. I think I addressed the school. The existing pump house. We have been working with, we've worked with Aurora Water, who owns that facility there. There are existing gas lines that run down here. You can kind of see them on this aerial. And there is an existing water line. We're well aware of all these facilities, and we've designed our facilities around those. And they are, meet the proper clearances that are required from each of the municipalities. So we don't believe there's any issue or conflict with the existing facilities out there. There was conversation about, you know, folks that live back up to this open space here, this open agricultural land, that they weren't aware of any development there. Not until we were ready to move forward with this project where we, you know, shared that information with the public. But at any time, anything could come in and get developed here. Lowry Land, or I'm sorry, Lowry Land Trust owns this property. It is a buffer parcel that they don't plan on building any residential properties on, but they're open to resident, I'm sorry, commercial, industrial, retail type of development. So if it's on a substation, eventually something's going to be built here at some point in time.
I'm sorry, I've got a question about the substation.
Yes.
Why can't you move it east?
That was something we had looked at. We had alternative sites to the east. As the gentleman stated, there's Arapahoe County Fairground.
And then you've got Aurora.
And then you've got the reservoir. Correct. And we wanted to keep the substation located to the existing line, negating the need to build additional transmission line to connect it. So.
I'm lost on that one because your, your green transmissions lines just go forever east. So don't you, then that's where you connect your substation at, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Why can't you connect it down there? Just as easy as you can connect to here?
Well, that's what we looked at. We wanted to get as close to the existing line as we could. But the, the available properties adjacent to the line were very limited. We also didn't have willing landowners that were willing to negotiate to sell. And we always, we do have the right to condemn on property, but that's always a last resort for us. So we, we did find a willing seller here on this property. It would also negate the need, like I said, to build additional transmission line. If we found a spot further east to build a substation, we'd still have to construct the tie line from that substation to the existing Smoky Hill and then bring it over and go down into the corner. Correct.
Thank you.
Lot of discussions about the mitigation. Like I said, we're handling that with the City of Aurora, which Tollgate and Towns Reach are both HOAs in that jurisdiction. There was conversation about, at one time, there was existing wood poles here. Over time, those had to be upgraded from wood to steel to handle the higher voltage that we brought in. Over time, when development happens, we have to upgrade our facilities. So that was kind of part of that development. The noise is more of a function of the wires on the, on the towers, not the towers themselves. And again, we designed these with low Corona hardware, which means it keeps the noise as minimal as possible. And we also follow the state statute guidelines regarding noise levels at the edge of the right away. We also, and part of this transmission line corridor, especially in this area right here that goes along DeGaulle on the west side, we have, we maintain a part of that corridor, but we also have an agreement with the developer that had planted landscaping in there. And that is the response for the developer to handle that maintenance. But the majority of the corridor is handled by ourselves. The color of the poles, that was another topic of discussion. That is kind of something that we're leaving open. Our typical design is to have weathering steel, which is kind of a brown rust color. The simulations that we showed showed the galvanized steel, but we're leaving that up to the public and to the jurisdictions to pick which color they prefer. And both Douglas County, I'm sorry, Douglas County preferred the weathering steel, and in Parker, they preferred the galvanized steel. Again, I think I, there was a lot of questions about burying the line. I think I addressed that. If not, please let me know if there's additional questions. And that's all I had, I think, unless I missed anything that you are aware of. Oh, correct, yeah. There was talk of screening the, the substation. We've, we've designed the berm to handle the screening on that. We have existing transmission facilities here in lines that'll be going in and out of the sub. And landscaping provides or is, becomes a clearance issue for us. We can only allow a certain low, low growing vegetation in those areas. Once they get to a certain level or a certain height, then we have to cut them because they become a clearance and a safety issue for the, the transmission lines. But like I said, we were all working with City of Aurora for the corridor mitigation issues to address those types of issues.
I have a question.
Yes.
So am I correct in thinking that the existing substation, I guess it's Smoky Hill Substation, then Cleveland Quincy, basically?
Correct, yeah.
You've, a pretty tall fence, and then you have landscaping around it in front. Are you planning, is that what you're kind of planning to do?
With the new substation, no.
Yeah, based on the people that live south.
With the existing substation, we just have a chain link fence around it?
Yeah, rocks and trees and.
And some, some very low growing landscaping, which was requested, I believe, in Arapahoe County at the time. Unfortunately, I don't believe it provides much of a screening for the substation.
Looks better than just asphalt or whatever.
But in the pre-application meetings that we had with Arapahoe County, it was discussed that the, the berming option works well. It's an opaque screening. I can't see through it. So we have the screening cover them, or the berm covering the majority of the equipment. And like I said, landscaping is just a, a maintenance and clearance issue for us around the substation.
So how high is the berm?
I believe it tapers off. We have, the, the height of the fence is eight feet, seven, eight is chain link fence, and then we have a foot barbed wire. The berm on the west end, I'd have to check by our plans, but they go, they exceed the fence line or the fence height, and they go, they taper down slightly to the east. And then the berm on the east side is well above the fence. I'd have to reference.
Because that's the side that they're going to look at, people who live there out their back door.
I would have to reference our drawings in the package, but if you go back to the 14.
It's 14 feet above the level of the substation.
Okay.
Both on the east side and west side.
Do you think? It's 14 feet above the ground of the substation on both the south and east. So it goes well above the seven-foot chain link fence with the barbed wire. Unless there's any other questions? Yeah.
There were several comments about your existing plan for maintaining around the towers that is there now. Is there a way that that can be improved? And what about this berm? What, what would that be made from of?
The berm will be constructed of the excess fill material that we have from the construction of the substation. And then we'll just be seating that with not native seed. And then the corridor, like I said, we'll be addressing that with the City of Aurora as far as how we further maintain that and improve it for visual aesthetics.
It sounds like there can be an improvement.
Correct.
Maintenance.
Correct, yeah.
I have a question. You're working with Aurora to improve the part in Aurora. What about the part in Arapahoe County? Because that's what we're concerned about.
Correct. And that's kind of what, the improvements around the substation with the berming was a, a design that we incorporated in order to offset any impacts to surrounding landowners. And there's significant costs wrapped up in that. We could have designed it differently to have it sit more on top of the surface instead of building it lower. So we worked with the county and had received comments during the open house. If there was anything we do around the substation, including berm's, was a, a comment that came back frequently. So we incorporated those.
What about the 1.8 miles of line improving that along there?
Let me get back to the map here real quick. Here are the two sections that we're dealing with in Arapahoe County. This main corner right here is mostly res, or I'm sorry, retail. We've got new developments coming on in this corner and on both sides here. And then this is the Eagle Bend at, Creekside at Eagle Bend Development on the south side there. We, I think part of the improvements that we're working on with Aurora, including a lot of trail improvements, will then cross over into Arapahoe County as well to connect those trails together. And part of the mitigation efforts will, will cross into Arapahoe County as well for those, those certain areas.
But I think whatever you agree with, with Aurora, we want you to agree.
Do the same.
The Arapahoe County part as well.
Correct, yeah. I think the majority of it, as far as the substation goes, like I said, was the design of the grading to accommodate screening at the substation.
Question, Paul?
Yes.
Seems to me that because you are adjacent to a number of communities, you could probably do some xeriscaping. You have a 14-foot tall berm, which would accommodate some low growing trees to at least make the site look a little more, I guess, or a little less industrial. Is that something you're open to?
Yeah, I believe so. We'd have to work something out with our vegetation management group as far as what we would allow in that area, in those areas, what would be compatible with the substation facilities.
Thank you.
So are we all done?
I got a question. Yeah, I just want to take you back to this EMF studies. So I guess what I understand is the state specification or allowance of EMF radiation trend, whatever, is from the, your right away sides or edges. So you're saying that the recent test said no radiation past your right away line?
Correct, yeah. The, the readings that we did directly underneath the line is when you're going to get the highest readings. And currently out there underneath the existing line, we got readings in the area of 44 milligals, which is the way they measure them. And once you got to the edge of the right away, it was in the neighborhood of single-digit milligals. And the edge of the right away, the state statute is 150 milligals. You have to be below 150. So you can tell we're well, well below that. And as far as adding the additional line next to that, the modeling that we've done, again, once you get to the edge of the right away, I believe we're in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 milligals, considerably lower than the 150 issued by the state or mandated by the state.
Thank you. Any more questions? Saying none, we will close the hearing. Mr. Skinner, do you have any further comment?
Bill Skinner for Planning. No, I don't think I do. We've noted that there'll be a second appearance on this, though that is in short order. So we'd have to start the communication right away if we need to reach out a little more, but I don't have anything extra to add.
Do you have a hearing date for that? Like in two weeks?
Yeah, we do. Commissioner Rosenberg, I'll just need a minute to look it up. Oh, actually, no, May 16th, so it is two weeks out. So, you know, actually, that is the service we can provide. Signs are up, newspaper notices gone out, letters have gone out. But as an additional form of public notice, at 9:30 a.m. on May 16th, we will have a public hearing for this 1041 application in front of the Board of County Commissioners at the county's admin building on Prince Street in Littleton, Colorado. The address is easily available, but if I see someone raise a hand, I can look it up and read it out. Unless I see someone who has it in front of them. Okay, help from the crowd. So 5344 South Prince Street, 5334 South Prince Street. Okay, that's it. That's all I have to add.
Thank you. Okay, this is to Planning Commission for a motion and then discussion.
I guess I would like to know how we can coerce Excel to landscape the areas that are seen by the people that live out there. Proper landscaping, a couple of trees. And if they have to maintain it, gee, I'm sorry. But you're such a small company, you can't do that. But really, I'd like to see some nice landscaping, trees, bushes, kind of hide the, the look.
I think you can do a condition of approval. I, I think the Excel has some legitimate concerns about trees and where they are relative to the lines. But certainly, you can add conditions of approval for landscaping that would fit within those parameters.
I agree with you, but I understand, I mean, I've seen them come in our areas and cut the trees because they're near the power lines, because they don't want our trees catching on fire and making our houses burn. So I understand their concern as well. But that's why I asked where the lines, the 1.8 miles was, could they do what they were doing with Aurora and at least make the trails or whatever they agreed to?
And that's the, but that's the power line.
That's the power, that's the distance.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
The substation. Yeah, I think they're limited unless the neighbors want exploding trees.
Well, not exploding trees, but put a couple of 10-foot pinion pines and some nice brush in there.
I would, yeah, go ahead.
Again, that would be kind of up to our vegetation management folks. I know you mentioned a specific type of tree, but even if it has the potential to get within our lines, we can't plant it or we won't cut it.
How high are your lines from the ground?
Clearance?
About 50, 60 feet.
As far as the line itself?
Yeah, the line itself, what, what the tree would get in trouble with.
It varies because.
There are the 14 feet, so.
We look, a, the design clearance that we look at under the maximum sag of our line is 32 feet. So National Electric Safety Code requires that we maintain. I'm saying 16 or 18 feet from the conductor. So we got a, the tallest tree you could put out there would be somewhere in the neighborhood, I'm just going to say nominally 16 feet, and that could be plus or minus a couple of feet either direction.
Throw us some eight-foot pinions. We aren't going to be around when that sucker hits 30 feet. No way. None of us.
So I think. I won't even respond to that because I've seen them cut too many trees that I didn't think they would ever get into the line. But I, I'm not to.
I'm not about to carry a time to grow some.
I know. I, I realize that. But that, that is what they look at, is they don't look at, will it be five years, 10 years? They look at, will it grow up there? And, and what they have done on several of our projects is they said, we will allow you to put a, I'm just going to give a, for instance, a tree that will grow up to a maximum height of 20 feet.
of 20 feet, that we design over that height that they've allowed that tree to grow to. So we know, excuse me, we know in advance what we would have, our criteria is, so that 32 feet now comes, I'm just going to say nominally 40 feet of minimum ground clearance. And if you were saying to put trees around the berm, the different berms-
Not on top, just stay in the middle. 70 feet, so you'd have, what do we have?
If you're talking about putting them on the berms and stuff, as long as we keep them away from our overhead transmission lines, which will be coming in on the east end of the substation from the south, doesn't matter, but the east end of the substation from the south.
The blue line?
The two blue lines on the east, and then we have the four lines going out the west end, the blue lines. If we were to put some trees, if you were to make that part of the conditions or whatever, that we put some trees in that area, so we maintain our clearances from our lines, that could work. That would, that I think would be an acceptable criteria.
Any other questions?
So where are we at? Mr. Bremel, you haven't said anything, so I'm going to ask you. And I think maybe we're looking at the 1041 first, because the 1041 is going on to the county commissioners. Make a motion.
Honey Daniels Park 345K Transmission Line and Substation 1041 Permit. We've read the staff report, received testimony at public hearing, and find ourselves in agreement with the staff report for the application, including all plans and attachments set forth in the staff report dated April 27, 2017. Recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve the request, subject to conditions 1 through 4 contained in the staff report.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Say, Ms. Rick, seconds. Now, do we have any discussion or amendments or anything?
That's transmission lines that go past the gate, correct?
This is-
Yeah.
Okay.
I got it.
Right. This is the transmission, but this is also the substation 1041.
So that's the one that we want?
Right there, that you keep talking about.
Okay.
So if you have anything you wanted to say, this is-
Yeah, I'd like to-
Okay.
I'd like to have a, I make a motion that we add a condition that Excel landscapes for areas around the substation that can be, or that would fit their regulations. You can make, it should fit in there.
I second.
And just for clarification, I think there was some testimony on the record which explained what some of that landscaping could look like, and so would you be incorporating that testimony?
Yes. So we, I think we'd want to put in there that they would use 8 to 10-foot trees and multiple bushes.
But that it worked within the limitations-
Limitations of their ability to do it.
What they can do.
I second that.
Okay. But is there any other discussion on the motion, the, on the amendment? Because we'll vote first on that. Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And we have any opposed?
No. No.
So you're opposed. Okay, so two opposed, so five to two, the amendment passes. Okay, so now is there any further amendments? Okay, I just want to comment, and I'm not going to make it, it's an amendment that they heard my discussion of, make this, what they're going to do with Aurora along the lines should be done in our part, and it sounds like they plan to anyway because they're talking about trails and all, and so that would just, you're not going to have a trail just in the Aurora part.
No.
Make sure it works throughout. Why don't you make it?
You should add that as a condition.
Okay.
If that's what you want.
Okay, because then I will do that. I move that, whatever they're doing with Aurora along that portion, they also do in the Arapahoe County portion to make it contiguous and make it flow. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, there's couples. Mr. Saul, thank you. Okay, is there any discussion on my motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, opposed.
Mr. Bremel, I don't know whether you- Okay, so I think by a five to two again, that also passed. So are there any other motions? Okay, saying done, let's vote on the full motion, and y'all pick on the roll on that just to make sure we get that right. Okay, Mark Bremel.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffin?
No.
Commissioner Latzus?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Rick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Okay, so six to one, if I got that correct? You are correct. Okay, by a six to one vote, the 1041 permit is recommended, as amended, to the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, now we go to the second case, the location and extent, which we vote on here. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bremel.
In the case of L16-006, Honey Daniels Park 345K Transmission Line and Substation LNE, we've read the staff report and received testimony at public hearing, we find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings for the application, including all plans set forth in the staff report dated April 27, 2017. Approve the request, subject to conditions 1 through 4 that are in the staff report.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Ms. Latzus, seconds. Is there any amendments or discussion on the motion? If you can call the roll again, please. Commissioner Bremel?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffin?
No.
Commissioner Latzus?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Rick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
So by a six to one vote, the location and extent is passed, and with that, we will take a short break. Mr. Chair, there's no way we can go on three more hours if all of these last- Because I don't think they're going to-
We have rules at 10 o'clock. We discuss if we keep going until 10:30.
We have to have unanimous votes.
Well, we do.
We have to bridge up the line laws.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you have been putting it out there. You love it. Mark will love it.
No.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Take care of everything. Get away from me. What? Cool. Zero growth. Anyway, raise my property, it's two and a half acres. They raised it 9,000, so they can pack it. It wasn't that small. I paid a hundred, it's 20,000. Just about one, so.
Yeah, they were. Yeah, it was cool, like.
Past my house, over the crosshair, back up there. I have no idea why they did that. Isn't that strange? But it was nice. I don't have to look at it. No, it did my property. It was underground. Isn't that weird? It's great. I never figured why they did it, but I wasn't going to ask anybody. No, but I know where it's at. I picked one up here because I would run next to mine. But it does agree, huh?
I'm just a worldly member.
Yeah, but none of them liked it, but so much. And I got a 10. Oh, I got it. Did you say that? No better cuts? No. I don't think I've seen that before. Yeah. That's new. Yeah, those are good. Oh, it's already found them? Yeah, good. I just found them and I grabbed them. Mr. Mike.
Okay, we are going to restart now. We have a lot less people here. I think things will probably be going faster than what we just had, so thank you for all for being here and enduring that. Okay, so we are now at case Z16-004, LSTRE Preliminary Development Plan, Mr. Skinner.
Okay, so with an eye towards the clock, but thoroughness, LSTRE PDP is a preliminary development plan. It is the bone zoning component of a planned unit development. There will be, at some later point in time, a final development plan, but tonight, we're talking solely about the authorization or the approval of uses, maximums, and minimums and so forth. This is a single lot PDP. The lot may be subdivided in the future, but we don't have that on the table right now, so tonight we're considering it as a single property. The property is located at 13202 East Aircraft Circle in Inglewood. Generally speaking, that's north of the Centennial Airport properties, and for another landmark, it's probably about a sixteenth of a mile south of the Broncos Training Facility. And for another landmark, it's probably about a sixteenth of a mile south of the Broncos Training Facility. Staff is pretty fond of this application for a couple of reasons. Myself personally, having spoken to the ownership of this property and various people over the course of the last fourteen years, many, many times. There were some issues with the property involving the zoning that made it a very, very, very difficult property in the marketplace. Current owner has taken those issues on head on. The result is something the staff is very comfortable with. The ownership took a look at what was approved in the nineteen eighties Dove Valley Air Park P D P. They looked at the Broncos Master Development Plan. They took a look at existing zoning categories in the B zones in the Arapahoe County Land Development Code. They came up with a compilation that is somehow tied to various already approved zoning uses in that area. We're perfectly happy with the compatibility, and when we come down to zoning approvals, that's pretty much what we're talking about. Is it compatible with the surrounding uses, with potential surrounding uses? Not much more to talk about on this one, because we haven't gotten into site plans yet. Key players in the area are gonna be Dove Valley as the largest owner of land in the area, the business park. And of course, Centennial Airport, we always look to for concerns. Centennial Airport gave me two different response letters, and I asked for some clarification and didn't get that back. They were identical with one exception. The more prohibitive response, more prohibitive response letter said that they would like to see something that precluded any chance of extended stay hotels. Because you'll see one of the proposed uses is hotel motel. Uh, that comes off of the surrounding Dove Valley M D P, which allows that. Staff thinks that's perfectly fine. You're certainly welcome to discuss that with the owner tonight, cause I'll bring them up here next, whether they're ready or not. And, and we'll just go forward from there.
You think the extended stay hotel is fine, or is it Centennial Airport? What's fine?
An excellent clarification, and sorry for the ambiguity there. Uh, yeah, I agree with Centennial Airport. The county staff is always interested in how we preserve that airport's viability. And an extended stay would be a very noise sensitive use. But we, we agree with that. I believe it was even added as a condition to the staff report, a suggested condition of approval.
So it is not added? Or it is added?
So condition number two says, "Language will be added to the P D P document that excludes any form of extended stay hotel accommodations." And it says lost, but it should say from the list of approved uses. Uh, but I, having worked with this applicant, do please have a discussion about it. It's, it's the least we can do. Staff is recommending approval on this, and I'm open for questions.
I have two questions. One is, um, Stormwater had a number of things that they had included, is that right? But I didn't see those in the draft motion as contingent, uh, condition of approval.
Nope, we figure that's covered under the blanket condition prior to the signature of the final copy of these plans. Applicant agrees to address public works staff comments. The Southeast Metro Stormwater Association functions as a referral agent of the county's engineering staff. So basically, their concerns are the public works concerns.
Okay, and so the Engineering Summary Planning Commission, all these in here you consider to be public works?
Yep, yeah, we won't move it up for signing until we have that resolved.
And the height issue?
Uh, please steer me a little bit on that.
Well, you, you've got an F A A height.
Oh, right, right, right.
Allow the height twenty feet above ground level? And, but yet, did I see buildings that could be up to, um, a hundred feet?
Okay, so the, the, I see the, I understand the, the question. The Centennial Airport acting on behalf of the F A A simply says that anything that is over twenty-four feet in height will have to file something called a seventy-four sixty. Seventy-four sixty form is conveying information to the F A A that allows them to put that object on navigation charts. They may not prohibit it, but they will want to map it. During that seventy-four sixty review process, they may come back and impose a different limitation on it. And say, well, you know what, you're good up to X and plus ten more, and that's that. We won't have that information specifically until they go through the seventy-four sixty process. A commissioner could add a condition to this that says the applicant will show proof of compliance or filing in completion of the seventy-four sixty process. Which we. We usually take that as a matter of course, that that's gonna be done, but we can document it.
Okay, well, if you take it as matter of course, that's fine. I just was looking at the, I have. I have two questions. One, this was not referred to the city of Centennial. Who's very concerned about what's going on in Dove Valley? I've had numerous comments from council members about the number of outdoor storage uses. And when you drive down Broncos Parkway and all through Dove Valley, you see a lot of outdoor storage now. And they voiced a lot of concern about that, that it wasn't even referred to them. Why not?
They were far enough away from city of Centennial's jurisdiction that I didn't choose to extend the referral that far out. If you'd like, we can reach out to them and see what they have to say. They, uh, they have been much less vocal as an organization on the referrals we've been sending to them in Dove Valley and in the areas surrounding Centennial Airport of the last year. I can't speak to the reasons for that. And I'm not trying to represent that they would be unconcerned in this.
Right, I mean, many things they're okay with. But that's the issue I've been hearing is outdoor storage. Like, condition, like, um, number seventeen, outdoor storage is a principal use. Or number twenty-six, contractor including but not limited to with or without outdoor storage. That's what I've been hearing from them is they, they think that a lot of things have been allowed that are not as nice looking as if they were in their city. And for all we know, they could annex a lot of this property over time. They may.
Yep.
So that's why they're concerned is.
Depends on the owner. They said don't annex, they can't.
Well, it depends if they surround them and all, there are ways they can continue to annex, so.
Well, okay, having heard the concern, I can, I can make a commitment here to the planning commission. I'm on good terms with city of Centennial staff. I mean, I can be to them first thing in the morning, and we can add whatever they come back to me with to the board summary report that moves forward to the board, if you would like to have us do that.
That would be great.
Okay.
So, because most of the things they're gonna be okay with, but there may be some they're not. So, and I think they should be heard.
Okay.
I have a question.
Certainly.
The building here, you said twenty-four feet was, yep, airport or?
In the Centennial Airport letter.
Yeah, but I mean, they're saying twenty-four feet? And I'm curious, the, uh, storage buildings on the south side of Bronco Parkway, just before you get to the entrance, how tall are they? I think it's about three, it looks like three stories. Is it twenty-four feet? Do you remember what I'm saying, it's high.
If this doesn't say twenty-four feet's the limit, it just says you have to go to the F A A with this certain thing, and they may say forty feet's fine.
Yeah, it sets, uh, the twenty-four foot is an estimation of how tall the F A A on first glance, or the city, the Centennial Airport staff actually, on first glance, thought you could get before you'd be required to file these.
Yep, okay.
Seventy-four sixties. I'm trying to think of a three-story storage building in that area that you were referring to.
They probably got away with it.
Cause the F A A may said it was fine.
And it's just big, sitting up there. Not one story.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go to the applicant?
Okay. So, moving on, then I'm gonna ask Troy Porras, I believe, Troy Porras, to speak briefly, and I'm available.
Hi there. Troy Porras, uh, five one three zero Brighton Boulevard, Denver, Colorado, you know, two one six. I don't have a slide presentation for you. But I also didn't make a billion dollars last year. I don't have, I don't really have a presentation, you know, you've seen what we've worked with, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would you be willing to remove outdoor storage as a permitted use?
That one, no, I mean, you know, you can make me, of course, but that's an important piece of our future plans. And I'll note that that is also a permitted use in all of the area around us. Including on both sides of our property, there's outside storage.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That we will go to the public hearing, or any of you here to address this issue?
I signed up, but.
Okay. I'll let you talk if you want. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to planning commission or discussion or motion. Mr. Brummel, this is your night.
I guess. In the case of Z sixteen zero zero four, uh, D V B P filing sixteen lot one, block one, uh, L S T R E P D P. Commissioners who read the staff report, find yourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments set forth in the staff report dated April twenty fifth, two thousand seventeen, and recommend approval of these applications, uh, subject to the following conditions, uh, one and two in the staff report.
Okay, Mr. Brummel move, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rader, seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion.
I'm opposed. I don't want any more outdoor storage, so.
So by a six to one vote, the motion carries, and, uh, but Mr. Skinner is going to reach out to Centennial. Thank you. So that is sent to the board of county commissioners, next. Now, you didn't have as much time to take as the billion dollars. Now we will move to case Z sixteen dash zero zero nine Copper Leaf Preliminary Development Plan Art Amendment. Mr. Skinner.
So Skinner for the planning division again. Uh, Z sixteen zero zero nine is modifying an existing established and approved preliminary development plan. That preliminary development plan being Copper Leaf. It is, in the overall scope of things, a limited amendment in two different ways. One, it is only limited to the, actually, three different ways. It is limited to the town center planning areas of Copper Leaf, so not the entire development. Two, it is limited primarily in regards to the setback to the area next to roads. In this case, specifically Copper Leaf Boulevard, Piccadilly and East Quincy Avenue in terms of the requested setback reduction from forty feet to twenty feet. There are also some provisions to kind of standardize the monument sign potential in Copper Leaf. Now, I am absolutely gonna get out of the way and let Copper Leaf talk about this, because I know they've been discussing this internally, and they will be best suited to answer the questions about any details of this. Overall, though, the staff is comfortable with the language proposed for the Copper Leaf amendment, and we are recommending approval.
Did Copper Leaf not already standardize their signs? I thought we did that in the past.
There is a standardized package for the neighborhood, the, the development and neighborhood identification monument, monuments. Uh, it doesn't extend to individual commercial signs for the businesses that may go into Copper. But, this will address that. Yep, fair question.
Any more questions for Mr. Skinner?
Okay. The applicant, I'm forward.
It's not a PowerPoint slides.
Is this a billion dollar presentation?
Not a billion dollar presentation. Pretty sure most of the power around here is gonna be underground. My name is Mike Serbo with Galloway, six one six two South Willow Drive, Suite three twenty in Greenwood Village. Um, I do thought the staff report was pretty to the point, pretty inclusive of everything that is included in the application. Just wanted to bring this up for some context. The, um, result of what's before you tonight was a back and forth process, you know, with staff. We came in thinking about setbacks, and after a lot of conversations, I think the result we have here is a more complete and comprehensive amendment that hopefully prevents us from having to come back, um, anytime in the future. The setback, uh, request, um, is a reduction from what is currently in the P D P. It is just to bring some consistency around Quincy and really prime that corridor, um, for commercial development. The, the signage, um, is, does not veer from code. Signage does explicitly state that we will meet, um, code requirements. It just is a little more specific as to what is counted as signage. So for example, monument sign, um, along Quincy, the architectural base that is meant to beautify and stay consistent with some of the sign package that has already been, um, approved throughout Copper Leaf, would not count. And that's very typical, um, through many municipalities. And we did not feel it was an egregious request, but, um, through our correspondence with staff, we really wanted to dial that in and be clear. As to what counts and what doesn't. So, again, no big PowerPoint presentation, but that really was the gist of the reason for this request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, in the, in the report, it says reducing the setback from forty to twenty feet will make it a more attractive, attractive for development. What does that mean?
Well, um, commercial development specifically along Quincy, visibility is, is very key. And if this was the only section along Quincy that was setback, um, forty feet compared to the rest of the corridor, it's a less attractive site for commercially end users. So to make it more attractive, it isn't necessarily a beautification thing. I will point out that, uh, the public right of way will be landscaped and enhanced, and, you know, landscaping code will be met with any development that comes in along here. But to make it more attractive is really from an end user standpoint of what commercial retailers are looking for.
So you're saying already built, commercial has the shortest setback?
No, so the setback is a twenty-foot setback from right of way along Quincy, and that's very typical, um, for arterials, tierly roads. But that is what we see to the north, as well as on other sides of Quincy, if you extend further down to the west.
Okay, thanks. Across the street.
The Aurora side.
The Aurora side, right. And that is. And that is Aurora's requirement along Quincy is a twenty-foot setback.
Any other questions? Thank you. That we will go to the public hearing. I think both people signed up, may not want to speak, so. If you are signed up.
My name is Kathleen Chandler. I'm at two-one-four-one-five East Quincy, or East, uh, Mansfield Drive, sorry, right there at Quincy and Piccadilly. Uh, the question I have is, where is the town center going to be? That's my only question, because we weren't here for the previous hearings, and so we just get a perspective of where, it says Copperleaf Town Center. Where is that going to be located? Uh, we, we're in favor of that development of that property, because we've seen it grow up, and we don't want it to catch fire, so it's better that it be developed than not.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back, so that... You can answer that question.
Yeah, so, um, the, on the, on the left, what's highlighted in red is technically the town center, so it is just a designation of land use, not necessarily referring to a master town center that's gonna be here overnight.
So that is part of Quincy, but really on the, the side that they've already built those double, just, uh, paired homes, or?
Um...
Where, where is that located?
And maybe you can point it, do we have the pointer, or did they have the pointer?
Quincy and...
That's gonna, it extends all the way to the east, uh, basically all the way to four-seventy.
Oh, so then, so the green is four-seventy?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
So is that whole area in red and it was...
The perspective of where, okay. So it's on the opposite side?
And likely, the big, what we consider the town center will be kind of on the corner of Quincy and four-seventy, you know, since it's the most heavily trafficked and most times visible.
And I was gonna ask a little about that, too, because we've been hearing about that for ten years, or however long, since we started Copperleaf, and always thought maybe there'd be, I think, that one of the corners here had been an Albertson's sign years ago. Um, is there anything happening there? King Supers or any...
I will, uh...
Bring retail out.
Defer the property owners if they'd like to report on any progress, but we are not aware of any, um, you know, retail activity of that nature at this time.
It'll be nice for the neighbors when that does occur.
And I think eventually it will.
Hi, my name's Richard Frank, uh, seventy-four-hundred East Orchard Road, Suite two-ninety South, Greenwood Village, eight oh-one-one-one. Um, we're starting with this, uh, you, you asked for retail, I'll, every time we come up with residential, and, uh, so we've started with this six-acre parcel along Quincy at the cor, uh, southeast corner of Quincy-Piccadilly, and we have, uh, the, the next case coming up is a convenience store gas station. In addition, we should be back to you with a couple of more uses, a coffee shop, possibly a drugstore. Um, we're working on those. We have about five pads on, on this piece, but on the larger piece, uh, we're getting activity for a, a grocer, maybe in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I can't promise you that, but we are, uh, in contact with, with some users, uh, uh, for that piece at, at, uh, E four-seventy and, and Quincy. Any questions?
That was the answer. Okay. There is no other discussion? Looks like Miss Chapman's already here. Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Okay. In the case of Z sixteen dash zero-zero-nine, Copperleaf PDP, Third Amendment, Commissioners have read the staff report. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments as set forth in the staff report dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, and recommend approval of these applications, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant agrees to address public works staff comments, including concerns identified in the most recent engineering staff report. Okay, is there a second to the motion? Okay, Mr. Saul, second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously and is sent forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you. Okay. Now move to case P sixteen dash zero-two-nine, Maverick Convenience Store Final Development Plan. Mr. Skinner.
Bill Skinner for the Planning Division again. Uh, P sixteen zero-two-nine is actually a part of the discussion you just had with Richard Frank about this six-acre parcel and retail coming onboard. It is a proposed convenience store, generally southeast of the intersection of East Quincy Avenue and South Piccadilly Street. The owner is still Copperleaf, but the applicant is Maverick Incorporated, and they're proposing a convenience store. And... Usually I have all this memorized. I cannot remember the size of a lot. They will tell you the size of a lot when they come up here. Please. Like, the discussion on this one, um, also fairly extensive. There's a lot going on here. I mean, it's a convenience store. It's on a busy street. It's inside an established PDP. They were amending the PDP regulations as part of getting the site prepped for this convenience store, and there is a concurrent plat that will be proceeding directly to the board to plat the lot for this store. It doesn't exist yet, but it's all part of the conjoined approvals. Staff concerns were largely addressed as we went through. I mean, I found it to be a pretty amiable process, and that's part of why we're seeing, uh, uh, solid staff recommend, recommendation for approval. I think that's it for me on that. Yeah, I don't have anything else to add to that. I wanted to make sure, but, uh...
So this piece of property here, that could have five or something different uses is what we just heard along there.
Yeah, the little red box is the site for the convenience store, and everything that is not in the little red box, I imagine, will be something else.
Like there could be, uh, Walgreens on the corner next to it, or something.
Something.
Because they like corners like that. Or CBS, because they're coming to town. And the street that will be built now, it's just on the side, or it goes behind it, but it, that is?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. So let's take a look at page two of that staff report, and there's a black-and-white depiction from the final development plan. You will see, at the top of that little depiction, there's Quincy Avenue. At the bottom, there is, and what looks like a blank track. If you look closer, you'll see curb lines and so forth, and then a north-south, short little bit of street, or I don't wanna call it a street, private drive that connects that private drive across the whole south of that site up to Quincy. That private drive across the south of the site will be handled with the aforementioned plat going to the board, and there will be a full width private drive that'll allow access to the back of all those properties as needed. And then the north-south piece immediately east of this proposed convenience store connects not only the internal turnoffs to the various parking lots, this one you see in the plan, others that we haven't seen yet. It also connects Quincy to that back access drive.
So the paired homes run the other side of that?
Yes, sir. The recently approved KB paired home development is south of this site.
Or they're separated. So will that be built through to Piccadilly when this is built?
The access drive?
Yeah.
Yes. So, just to be clear, on the, on the commercial side, not on the paired home side.
Right. Okay. So you could enter either way? I have a question. So, do you consider Cunningham Fire District Public Works, too?
We don't.
Because they have a number of conditions of approval that didn't make it into the...
They do. We include them in the staff report, and we also expect that they'll be working with the applicant.
Okay, so we should add those to the recommendation?
Yeah, Cunningham has a separate review process outside of the county's process. Um, we steer them to them and make sure that it is, it is accommodated, but aside from noting the concerns, we don't go too deeply into them.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Skinner? I have one. Building height, total building height? It goes thirty-one, one and a half feet. Can I correct up for that entrance?
Believe so, yes. For the, the, let's clarify that with the applicant. I think that's to the highest point of any of the architecture at all, be it ornamental or structural.
Okay. Let's go to the applicant. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Russell Skews with Maverick, uh, one-eighty-five South State Street, Salt Lake City, Utah. First, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight and the opportunity to be in Arapahoe County. This will be our first store here. Um, we do have some other locations that we are working in the Denver area. And next, I would also like to thank Bill for, um, his diligence in working on this process. It's been, we've had a number of meetings, and, um, it's, they're gone very well. As you can see, we are working with Copperleaf on this project. It's about a one-point-six-three acre parcel. Um, we've worked very closely with them and with staff, um, to provide a, it's a, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-six premium convenience stores throughout ten states. Um, we are based in Salt Lake. Uh, this store is about fifty-six-hundred square feet. Um, we do serve made-to-order food, um, so it's more than just a convenience store. We actually, we pride ourselves on, um, everything that we provide. And I could, really could, uh, answer any questions that you have of us, um, tonight, and we hope that you follow staff's recommendations, um, because we are in concurrence with those. And so, for that, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Your food area?
Yes.
Sit down?
Uh, yes. No, there, there are, there is seating in the, um, store, if I can. I'll go ahead and give you guys something to look at.
Thank you.
It just happened to happen now. And, and as you, it might be noted in there, but we do also have outdoor seating, um, that is screened. You can see that on the plan as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said you have over two-hundred stores. Are all of your stores identical architecturally and with landscaping, or?
The, what you...
Some a lot.
Well, what you see here is, is our current, um, plan. We do have, originally, they were country stores, um, and now today, what you see is, it's a more, um, we like, we're adventure's first stop, and we like to, as you can see by the photos, um, the interiors are, are all done with murals. Um, we have, uh, it, it's just a, it's, the way that it looks, it immerses you in that experience. It's an experience when you go to a Maverick. Um, so currently today, that is what we are proposing today. Don't look for any changes. Right now, we do have different building sizes, but that is the architecture that we are proposing today.
Hey, I have a question. Does this store look like the Castle Rock store?
I'm not sure.
Over there, store. They have one in Castle.
Craig Romrell, also with Maverick, twenty-five, uh, South State Street, Salt Lake City, Utah. Uh, yes, it, it, yeah, materially, there are a few changes, the entrance feature with the wood timbers and, um, uh, I think we have more outdoor seating in this facility, and it's, I think it's about a thousand feet larger at this location, so. Uh, but essentially the same feel. I, I think we have the same type of artwork inside the Castle Rock store.
So that store, the stone that's along corners, goes all the way to the roof? And on this, it only goes like halfway? So you cut it from what you did there? Just looking at your pictures online.
Online, yeah.
And we, we've also, um, we've worked closely with Copperleaf. I mean, part of the, our architecture was that, um, they had to review this and have it approved through Copperleaf before we moved forward, and also to meet city requirements as well.
Does the Castle Rock store has more architectural features than this one does?
Yeah.
This, this one looks dummy down, actually. So... Is all of this corrugated steel? What is the, that's not stone? What is that made of?
That's a, it's a fiber cement. Um, is that the, the exterior? Yeah.
So why can't you extend the stone all the way up like your other store? Is there a reason for that?
There's no reason that we can't. Um, that would be something that we'd have to, you know, talk to, again, to Copperleaf about and see if that would be something that would be acceptable. Is that just on the corners?
It's on all of the corners where there are features going up. And the one in the middle. All the way to the top.
That is something definitely we can look at. Absolutely.
There are other questions? Do you have any more questions?
Want to get into that?
I gue, I guess.
If we do, yeah.
On the city of Centennial remarked that they wanted to see more landscaping on the south side. Is there any way to increase the landscaping there?
On the south side of our property?
Behind, behind this, your store?
Um... I think we do have pretty extensive landscaping, um, there already.
Yeah, I'd like to see more trees. More pinyon pines, bigger trees.
Steph has a question, or for clarification, do you mean on the Maverick site, north of the access road, or are you talking about somewhere else?
Well, on the, on the south side of...
Why do you think Centennial?
On the south side?
That's what they say in their letter.
Right.
South side of the Maverick property, north of the road.
But on their property.
On their property, thank you.
On the south side, uh, what Centennial doesn't realize is the paired homes are about ten or fifteen feet below this area, so there's a big slope, there's retaining walls behind this property. So, uh, as far as trying to shield those, those, uh, paired homes, they're, they're well below this, and we have a fence that's gonna go along the very south boundary, and the width of that landscape strip on the very south side is, is pretty limited of what type of, uh, plant material you can get in there that'll, that'll live, and part of the reason for that is that there's retaining walls on the south side of the south side.
So you, to have the number of fuel pumps you want, you can't move the store further north?
No, because the turning radiuses for the, for the tank, tanker trucks and those sorts of things is all, you know, very technical, these guys can answer, but, uh, that's why you see some pretty wide access points and, and big radiuses around those pumps.
Okay, thank you.
Saul, I got a question.
Sure.
So, uh, what approximately is the width?
So, uh, what approximately is the width of the planting area, planting area behind the store on the south side?
Uh, on the very south side of the, uh?
Of that building? Or the back of the building?
Well, Daniel, I'll let you.
You mean right here?
Yeah, I don't know what that is. You should know what that is.
Yeah. Well, the sidewalk is five feet there that we have behind the building. So, i- it's difficult to see that the, you know, with the, I don't know if that's dimension right there on that plan, but I'm going to say it's somewhere between maybe three feet right behind the store.
Between those stories.
Between the, the store and the sidewalk and then, yeah.
Yeah, because you show, uh, some decidu- deciduous trees, uh, two-inch calipers along there on your plan. And I would like to see that double behind the store.
Carried all the way down.
Carried all the way across the back of the store with two and a half inch caliper trees. Now get a nice tall tree. Because I'm not talking about shielding as much as the look. And I think that's where Centennial is. And then, uh, further west, I'd like to see, uh, three pine trees in there instead of the just deciduous. I'd like to see some more pines. Then on the far corner, on the far corner of, let's see, it'd be the west, southwest corner, I'd like to see a twelve-foot pine. And then up, um, on the northeast corner, I'd like to see a twelve-foot pine in there. And then on the, uh, northwest side, I'd like to see two or three pines in there. Yeah, sure.
Just to kind of throw the staff opinion in here, uh, Centennial is asking the question about maybe east, maybe more. Steph likes it the way it is because one of the brightest things that's going to be on that property is the fuel canopies. We like the fact that the fuel canopies are further away from the residential. We like the fact that the building is going to screen that activity. Uh, we haven't discussed whether the fuel pumps will be open twenty-four hours or not. Um, I personally appreciated the fact that should someone choose to leave their car idling and their stereo going while they're picking up gas at midnight on their way home from somewhere, that building will be there between that car and those parrot homes. So I, Steph wasn't necessarily in agreement or supportive with the idea that the gas station, the pump should move.
And he's not suggesting.
That's all right. I, it's, it's just this, that has come up in part of it.
Yeah.
I only wanted to speak to that. The rest of the conversation is still on the table. And of course, you know, that's just Steph's position. We're, uh, same rank as you are in this. We're making a recommendation, so. Just wanted to make sure that was.
Right, but I haven't heard anyone really say we, it was asked about moving it forward, but I don't.
Right.
Went anywhere. I think his is just land.
His landscape.
Okay.
Seen the slats.
So to finish my request, the, uh, deciduous trees along the north side between that and Quincy Avenue, I'd like to see a two and a half inch caliper trees instead of two.
Okay, if I, if I can, we are fine with adding additional trees. The issue that we do have is along the southern boundary there, we have utility issues that will, um, not allow us to put some trees in certain locations. We have some storm sewer on that, the far west corner, the southwestern corner, that would impact putting a large tree in there. Um, and we have water meter coming. Most of our utilities are coming off of the backside of that. So, we, we are in agreement as long as it's not going to affect or hamper any of those, um, areas.
We just don't want it to hit your power lines.
We just don't want him to hit the power lines, yeah. Or under the, or under the canopy, yeah. But as you can see, we do have him inside our store. Yes.
Uh, could you clarify for me where the retaining walls are? I'm assuming they're south of the access road? Is that correct? So what is the total gap then? Because it looks like it measures at forty feet with easements, that back road, is that correct? So you'd have that much of a buffer plus your probably ten feet to the housing? So I guess to, uh, clean that one up, how far is your building from the fence line to the parrot homes?
I think it's thirty-eight feet. If you look in the landscape plan down in the box right.
It's about fifty feet. Yeah. I thought they were just talking the south bound.
So what trees of those Mr. Rader talked about work?
He had, he had a plethora of trees in there.
So where do they work?
The southwest corner. You see, you can't put a pine in there because of the.
Because we have storm sewer there.
Move it north until you're away from it. Move it ten feet north.
Okay. We also don't want to, you know, limit our visibility. Like you said, we will, we will do all that we can to put those in. Um, I don't know if we want to, um, we can provide, you know, some other locations. This is our time.
Mr. Skinner, how should we go about this?
Uh, Bill for the Planning Division, um, few ways you could do it. You could try and come to a quantity. You could say, you know, Planning Commission would like to see X number of trees, perhaps specify a size range to the site. I would recommend having a discussion before just setting it. You could also specify, just increase the number of in a given area. Both of those would be fine. And you could condition it on the approval. The specific language of that kind of escapes me at the moment, though.
This is really pretty minor.
Yeah, one of the things I think we're, and we're also, we're, we exceed our, the minimum requirement as well for landscaping.
So, I, I think we could designate the, the caliper size and the height. So just come up with a number. So, deciduous trees, two and a half inch caliper. Uh, the evergreens, twelve foot. Well, I'm just, I can't, we're trying to figure it here with him, what we say. And I come up with seven each twelve-foot pines. In the same number of, of deciduous trees.
If I may, Commissioner, I think it is important to point out that we do exceed the current code and fourteen trees are required, fifteen are proposed.
I appre- I appreciate that, but it doesn't matter to me. I want to see, I want to see bigger trees.
Perhaps an accommodation could be reached exchanging shrubbery for a number of trees or something else. But, uh, they have provided, uh, an extensive planting plan and you do get to a point where the plants start to crowed each other out and their health is in question.
Yeah, I, I agree. But the idea of, of just the larger trees and then the larger pine trees, and I think there should be a couple more. And then as far as just in, as a discussion, as far as the back of the building, uh, I can see that you didn't put any, uh, deciduous trees in one area. I think that may worry the utilities in a little sort of. We got a shoot there. Yeah, so that, that won't be anything in there. Right. Except little bushes. Right.
Reiterate what, what, what is said. We, we exceed the requirements. Uh, we cannot do twelve-foot evergreens.
Why?
They're very expensive, they're hard to find, uh.
I can tell you where you can buy them. Not, buy them five hundred, a hundred, a hundred dollars more than they are.
I think your normal, I think your code is six feet on, uh, evergreens and we could probably do eight.
You already specified eight.
Then that's, that's what we can do.
About ten. That, that, that gives you a, like a twelve foot.
Yeah, I, I respect what, I, I understand where you're, but, you know, we've, we've got a lot of landscaping, a lot of development costs here and, and this is just adding to it. And I don't really see where that's adding anything to this plan. We're, we're, you know, we are buffering the homes behind us. I think that, uh, is, is evident. But we don't want to hide the visibility along Quincy. Um, you know, that's the worst thing you can do for any retailer is, is hide them back there.
But I'm not asking you to add any more trees.
Just, just a size, so.
Just where?
Two corners.
The two south corners.
Those are on your plan.
The two north corners.
There are two north corners.
We have site triangles there.
Huh?
There's site triangles.
What's that mean?
You have to be able to.
Oh, you said, oh, I, I got you now. But you're going to put, you're going to put a deciduous tree in there.
Okay, we're gonna.
No, every, all the trees are outside the site triangles. So we can't, we can't go into those site triangles with trees.
Okay, but I bring, I go, but you've got tree, you've got a tree in there.
No, not in the site triangle.
Okay.
Or shouldn't be if there is. If, if there is, the, uh, engineering will, will.
Yeah, let's move.
Thank you.
Forward.
Thank you.
Uh, bring this back to Planning Commission. Uh, do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we didn't do that?
Yeah, okay.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address?
Go ahead. Sorry.
My name is Kathleen Chandler. I live at two one four one five East Mansfield Drive. And again, I live in this very similar area. Um, first of all, I just want to commend them for doing such a good job and I just kind of want to say, if you deny this over a tree, I will be very upset. So.
I won't give you my address.
Well, but I just think that that is a really kind of a, okay, so I'm going to move on from that question. But my ultimate question is, will this convenience store produce a request of liquor license at some point? That's my only question.
Okay, is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Saying that we will close the public hearing.
And to answer her question, yes, we will at some time.
Is there any? Any other questions? Okay, we will bring this back to Planning Commission for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, yes, thank you. Considering the findings and other information provided herein, staff recommends, oh, that's you. Oh, here, there we go. All right. Okay, in the case of P sixteen dash zero two nine Maverick Convenience Store FDP, the Commissioners have read the staff report. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments set forth in the staff report dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. And recommend approval of these applications subject to the following conditions. Right, prior to the signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address public works staff comments and concerns to approval of application P sixteen dash zero two nine Maverick FDP is conditioned on the approval of Copperleaf filing for number fourteen replat, which will establish the lot depicted in P sixteen dash zero two nine FDP. And may I add a third condition?
I think you have a condition. And do we have a second?
Oh, do you want my third condition?
Okay, your third.
Third condition applicant will meet the specifications outlined by Cunningham Fire District in their review of this speech.
I have a second.
Okay, Ms. Rick, second. I move an amendment that the stone columns need to be raised up like the Castle Rock store and go up to the roof.
I agree. Gives it more architecture. They did it in Castle Rock. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Rick, second. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Did you?
I, I agreed with you.
Oh, okay. So, five to two.
That passes. Is there any other amendments?
Did you have any here?
Ms. Rick.
Okay, I'll try this, but it's not going to work. Um, I, I like to make a motion that the, uh, landscaping trees, the decidu- decidu- I can't say it, deciduous trees, uh, be upgraded to two and a half inch cal- calipers and that the evergreen trees be a minimum of ten-foot heights.
Okay, is that the extent of it? Okay, um, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on those few changes on the trees. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that, this is defeated. All right, okay. Um, now we're to the main motion as amended. Is there any discussion on it? Okay, would you pick all the votes please? Bill? Okay. Things were moving on.
Commissioner Brummel? Commissioner Cheffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lassus? Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Rick? And Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Okay, so by a seven to zero vote, the motion is sent forward to the, uh, Board of County Commissioners as amendment. Thank you. Last one. One left. Okay, now we are to, um, if Mr. Skinner is ready. Are you ready, Mr. Skinner? Do you need a minute to catch up? We're okay. Okay. Um, case P sixteen dash zero two seven Saddle Rock Highlands, number seven, final development plan.
I'd just like to point out that, um, our company is. Our company has done work with J three engineering in the past, but not the particular engineer on this plan.
Does anyone have a concern with that? No one does. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, so last case of the evening. P sixteen zero two seven, Bill Skinner for the Planning Division. Saddle Rock Highlands, number seven, final development plan is an FDP proposal, so we're talking a site plan portion of a PUD within the Saddle Rock Highlands preliminary development plan. Uh, property is sited on the northeast corner of Quincy and South Malta. The proposal is for ninety-six single-family detached homes and supporting tracks and infrastructure on a sixteen point three acre parcel at a approximate density of five point nine DU per acre. Uh, the staff is recommending approval. We're supportive of this. There's one thing I'm going to add to the record tonight. I've been having some conversations in the last two days with the Arapahoe Park and Rec depart- or Park and Rec District. They own and maintain the park site north of this property. There was a misunderstanding and their comments looked to be resolved to staff. We found out that was not the situation. Conversation is ongoing and it's all being worked out, but they did want to be sure that staff noted they had responded and they are participating in the process. That was their primary concern, that their activity was noted. As far as the comments, it is all being worked out to people's satisfaction. Uh, we will provide the correspondence of that as a. as it comes through. We don't have it yet for the board summary report. Staff would also like to point out that the property that they're going on to with this proposal actually has zoning that allows significantly higher densities. And we appreciate the single-family detached component. We also appreciate the fact that it's a fairly small lot, single-family detached component, because that market segment seems a little bit underserved at the moment. There are some discrepancies between what the PDP allows and what the county's land development code, small lot regulations require. Staff poked into this in some detail and it looks like when the PDP was approved, that the small lot regulations were being considered. There's evidence in the language in the staff report from that approval and in other aspects of the PDP. So staff will go to the board and note this because the language in the small lot regulation says that everyone is required to comply with all of them. Given the ambiguity in the specific, funny, the ambiguity in some language in the PDP that gives the developer, any developer coming forward options, and then the specificity of other language in the PDP that shows that they were considering those small lot regulations, we're simply gonna go forward and, uh, bring this to the board's attention in the board summary report and see if they choose to pull it off the consent agenda for discussion or if they simply move it forward acting under their authority to modify regulations inside a PUD. That was a mouthful, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So I guess the short version of that is staff is extremely comfortable with the level of compliance we see with applicable regulations in this proposal. Sorry to kill you with the details there, but I needed it on the record.
So, man, so was what you were just saying, what I read in here that said, even though they're not complying with all the rules, they were so diligent about it, we're gonna go ahead and let it go.
Yeah, essentially, there's different versions. Well, there's different.
I mean, is that?
That's what I was talking about. Yeah, I mean, there's different versions of that. There are people who are blatantly trying to get outside the regulations. Then there are people who find themselves in a, in a gray area and they do their best to comply. They're just stuck in a conflict.
So, how, to what extent does this become or have the ability to become a precedent?
I would say it's not. Uh, the circumstances in this one are unique. And this is not the first time we found in ourself in our, in this situation. We had a paired home development in the four square mile area in two thousand six or two thousand seven that simply because of an obscure technicality couldn't comply with a regulation regarding front garage door setbacks. Had we forced them to comply with it, we would have ended up with a much in, much more inferior site plan. So staff did the same thing in two thousand six or seven. We noted the discrepancy and then moved it to the board to see if the board felt like it was worth moving forward with. Um, and in, for the record, in that case, yes, the board said, we understand the problem and we're, we're approving this.
So ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. I'm always looking at, the first thing I look at is who was it referred to with adjacencies? Does this not refer to the Tall Grass Neighborhood Association?
I.
Isn't this right next to Tall Grass?
Yeah, I believe it was. If it's not noted in the staff report, that's an oversight.
No, it is. Under referral comments?
He's told us.
No, that's a, it is adjacencies. If you go to the referral comments, Tall Grass is not. No, it's not.
Yeah, Commissioner Rosenberg, that's a good catch. I, I.
Oh, it did go to them.
Yeah, we sent this one to, all three of these applications went to Tall Grass, Copper Leaf and Saddle Rock Highlands.
Thank you.
We'll correct that in the staff report as well.
And you obviously didn't have comments or you would have had them in here some.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Skinner? Why don't we move to the applicant then?
Okay, no questions for me. Um, so we're gonna bring Tim up to speak and I'm available if you need me.
Hello, Tim Bouchard with Meritage Homes. Our address is sixty-eight ninety-two South Yosemite Court, Centennial. Tonight we're here to talk about, um, what we're calling Tall Grass at Saddle Rock Highlands finally number seven. We've already kind of seen the address here or the location. Here goes the next slide here, which is gonna be the PDP. So as Bill stated, this, uh, is one of the last parcels, parcel G of the existing PDP. Currently zoned two hundred and sixty lots for multifamily and we're coming in with ninety-six single-family detached lots. That was a typical fifteen to the acre. We're coming in at five point nine, as Bill stated. So we think it's a, a good fit for the existing community. We did have a neighborhood meeting on January twenty-fourth at the Copper Leaf Clubhouse. We had twenty to thirty people show up. Lasted about an hour. We just talked through some different issues and concerns and we've addressed them in the site plan as well as just basically getting the general information out there. So we did, uh, do that, uh, back in January. Let's see, we'll move on to the next slide here. Site plan. This is our overall site plan. Uh, two points of access, one coming in off of Malta. The other one, I believe, is that, uh, can't even read that. That's Prince Street, Princeton Street? Um, I'm sorry, what? Oxford, sorry. Um, so two points of access. That will be, uh, built in our first phase, which we hope to start in June of this year and expect about a six month development, um, before we be building houses and, and then another five or so months to, to have our first models open. So we're looking at a little over a year to, to have it open. This landscape plan here shows we, we've added a central corridor that comes up from Quincy up to the park. So that is a, uh, five foot trail coming up until this last section up here, um, which is actually where it ties in to the actual park. That is gonna be an eight foot section. That's one of the comments and concerns that the district had. Part district also would like for us, uh, Meritage Homes to come into an agreement with them on who will maintain that. So it'll be maintained by a, a sub-association that'll be created. So that little section will be maintained by us unless some other agreement is, is, uh, arrived at. But right now we're waiting on their attorneys to get us a draft agreement. Over in the northwest corner over here, this is our detention area. It's actually a water quality pond. And actually, we call it a water quality rain garden. So it's a little bit different than a standard detention pond that you'd see with a micro pool and then standing water, um, after a rain event. This is actually designed with a porous material. So typically water is gonna come through and get soaked into this. So it actually kind of addresses the Tri-County Houses uh, letter in the packet that talks about mosquito. Generally, you get the mosquitoes generated from these micro pools, which is a water quality thing. That is where the water comes into first. And literally, these ponds don't have that. It's a new design. It's been built at some other projects. Actually, uh, Sims Wall, I believe, is building a demonstration of one of these ponds at their facility right now off Jordan Road. Um, so I don't know that it's complete yet, but I know it's, it's, uh, in progress right now. So that's a, a unique feature that we're gonna be putting into this subdivision. Next slide, this is, uh, this is the final plat. Um, just put some color on it to make the lot stand out. So these are actually forty-five foot by one hundred foot deep lots. So it holds, uh, sorry, thirty foot, thirty-five foot homes on these lots. As we said, there'll be ninety-six of these, about sixteen point three acres. So that gets the five point nine, uh, DUAC on the density. Uh, we're looking at homes in the square footage range sixteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square foot. We're averaging probably twenty-two hundred with the mix that we're proposing on, on the overall subdivision. Price ranges, we're expecting base prices at three, uh, three seventy-five up to four oh five. But we think the average sales price after people go to the design center will be more around four fifty for these lots. We'll go on to the next one here. This is our current phasing plan and this has gone back and forth with, uh, the county as well as ECCV. So the first phase has forty lots and it does give us our two points of, uh, fire access. It also gives us, uh, looping water. And, uh, we think those forty lots will give us at least a ten month supply. We're at, we're, we're performing this at four units per month. So that'll get us through about a year. So this could be a two, two and a half year total build out of this community. And I believe that finishes off the residential portions of Tall Grass or Saddle Rock Highlands. And we would, as I had stated, we hope to start this, this summer, see, uh, pavement before winter hits us again. And then, uh, we'll be building houses and models, uh, expecting two model homes and then, uh, be open spring of next year. So that's the, the, the overall presentation. If there's any questions, I can go on to any other details anybody's might have.
So, um, kind of skipping ahead to your elevations, are you planning to use any sustainable building products or low maintenance building products?
That's a, uh, you know, I'm not sure exactly on sustainability of our, our actual materials. We are the leading builder in energy efficiencies. Literally, we had just switched all of our houses, uh, going forward to all LED. We actually can offer a net zero house. Um, but as far as renewables materials, that's something I might just have to ask here. You know, do we use any?
We're using, it's just like most builders do, it's just saying. Probably not, probably not what you're requesting, but.
I was curious about that, like Partybacker, that kind of.
Yeah. Glenn Neer with Meritage Homes. Um, I can never remember our address, so it's the same address that Tim said right there. Sixty-eight ninety-two South Yosemite Court. So as Tim mentioned, we are, and we pride ourselves nationwide. We are the, um, as far as a national builder. We win every energy efficiency and we're kind of cutting edge, um, as far as what we provide to the public. It probably costs us an extra anywhere from two to four dollars a square foot to build a home compared to our competitors. So from an insulation standpoint, oh, that's right, we have this slide here. This shows, I mean, this gets into a lot of detail and I'm sure you're probably not interested in getting into all the detail tonight. But one of the things that we do that stands out compared to some of our competitors is we, um, use foam insulation throughout our entire, um, home. And that's the cavity of the, of the, um, so the act, actually the attic space is a conditioned space. So we don't in this market build net zero homes, but in some of our markets in California, we actually have net zero homes where they actually use absolutely no energy. So, um, anyway, here's some of the things that we do compared to other builders. And a lot of builders do some of the same things, but we take it a step beyond. Okay, that answers your question.
Thank you.
Um, I think you said that the perimeter fencing next to the streets will be put in by you, but the rear fencing will be controlled by each homeowner. Are you gonna have a homeowners association so it'll be uniformity?
Yes, so we actually have a fencing plan that's part of the FDP. Um, so we're, we're doing, uh, along Malta and, uh, Quincy. We'll be doing, uh, a more upgraded, uh, top rail type privacy fence with columns. And then along the park, it'll be open rail fencing. And then we will have normal privacy fencing that backs up the commercial to help screen a little bit of that. Um, but yes, we will have a sub-association that will be controlling the fencing, uh, when the homeowners come in. Typically, Meritage will put in the wing fences on the front side yards and, uh, it's up to the homeowner at that point if they wanna have us put in the fencing or if they're gonna do it themselves. But they will have to follow our approved guidelines, um, for the HOA as well as the FDP.
And you're, it seems like you're building very close to Quincy and there will not be a lot of room. I mean, your landscaping to me is minimal. Um, and who will maintain that?
That would be the association.
The association?
Yeah. Kind of going back to landscape plan, that'll be any of the, any green areas shown. So that, any of these green spaces will be maintained by the sub-association. The hard corner down here at Malta, that's white, that's actually part of the Tall Grass Association now. So they'll continue to maintain that. And we're not planning to do any modifications or even touch that existing issued monumentation.
I, I'm disappointed that your, your run is the elevation next to the street and along Quincy, it will be a wall.
And we, what we did to address that is add the columns on there, which it does not, I believe it was a requirement. We actually added more columns than what was typically.
But the, the housing themselves will be.
And we will have some one stories in there, I believe, will be a couple of one stories. Um, so that will help break up that. It won't, should not be all straight two-story. So it'll help break up the.
What's your rear setback on those houses?
Uh, that's a good one. Fifteen feet. Oh, you're talking.
Fifteen across the board? Is there any, are you doing anything different? Where are you about the main streets or?
No, our setbacks are standard throughout the subdivision.
One more question.
Yes.
What thing do you normally use?
It's, uh, just composite shingle, shingle, I believe forty year. Sorry?
How many ply? How thick?
Forty year.
It's forty year, so I'm not sure the, the actual.
Well, I, long term, it would be nicer, I mean, forty year now is not much of a shingling. It would be nice if you would.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I missed the type of siding that you're using.
So it's cementation siding? So it's kind of a composite?
That's what I thought you said. Thank you.
The other question.
Actually, what fencing material are you using? Is it cedar or are you doing a kind of composite on your fencing?
I believe we just had cedar on there. Is that right, Karen? Cedar was stamped.
Tri-County Health made a comment if your sidewalks are only four feet, is there any way to make them five feet?
Right now we are just following the standard, uh, Arapahoe County detail for the right of way. So that's basically what we're using throughout the subdivision. We have increased the size of our trail connection is five feet coming up until you get to the eight. So we've already gone above and beyond what the standard is for the county going through the main corridor to bring people from Quincy all the way up to the park. But as far as going around there with all the different utilities that we have in the front, and the way we had to work with ECCV on separations of everything, water, gas and storm, it is a pretty complex and tight what's going on underneath that street. So I don't know that we'd be able to really do that. Plus, we'd probably need to get a modification from engineering to, to even be able to go to four and a half.
How wide is the sidewalk along Quincy?
That is ten foot. Any other questions?
Looks like we're good and we'll go to the public hearing. I won't forget it.
Thank you.
Hands up.
Again, my name is Kathleen Chandler. I'm at two one four one five East Mansfield Drive. And obviously this is very important to us because we live right here. So all this is happening on the same night. So this is great. Um, I have two questions. One is, um, the HOA, because I am part of Tall Grass HOA. So you mentioned an HOA, but then you said sub of the HOA. So just a little bit of clarification because I'm on the board and I haven't heard anything about them being part of the Tall Grass HOA. So I would like a little bit more clarification on that. And the other question is, um, when the, uh, other, um, retail businesses went in there, we asked if there could be a bus stop near there and there is no bus stop. So my mom, who qualified for, um, accessory ride, the closest accessory ride opportunity is all the way at Quincy and Reservoir Road. So it would be nice to petition somehow to get a bus stop since there's obvious. get a bus stop since there's obviously more housing that's going in here and a lot more retail. And I don't even know how to go about that, but it would be nice, and I don't know if the builder has any influence on that, but there is no transportation bus stop area at all up and down this section of Quincy.
I have a question for you. Did you have a chance to review these plans?
I was elected on the HOA board in January, so prior, I have not heard that, but again, I was just newly, I'm a newly-elected person, so if this was proposed before I was on board, I don't know. Can't speak to that.
Okay, is there anyone else in the public who would like to address the planning commission? Saying none, we will, oh, you can.
I'm here to elaborate.
If you want to, you can. Okay, it's past ours. Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the applicant.
Thank you. So regarding the HOA question, so when I mentioned sub-association, our understanding when we were in due diligence is that this had not been annexed in to the HOA, and to do that, it would take significant efforts. We can work with them if they would like us to join in and have the 96 homes contribute to their fees. If not, our plan initially is to create a sub-association that would act on behalf of this 96-unit neighborhood and take care of their own properties. But we're more than willing to work with the HOA if they believe that they can get the votes to get us in. But it's not the easiest process in the world to happen. And as far as a bus stop, I'm not familiar on how you would ever get a bus stop. I know this road too is also, it's Arapaho County, but it's also City of Centennial, and then I guess you'd be dealing with RTD, so something we can look into, but I am not familiar with how to get a bus stop.
Thank you. Mr. Haskins, do you know anything about that?
Just for the benefit of our-
Yeah, as Tim indicated, the road is actually, down the middle is the City of Aurora, and we own the outsides, but we have an intergovernmental agreement with the city. They actually maintain this. But I think we could make a request to RTD to evaluate a bus stop. I can't guarantee you that, but it seems like a reasonable request, given the level of development we have out there. So staff can look into that, okay?
Thank you. The Chancellors, we're excited to hear that. So thank you, Mr. Haskins. Okay, is there any other discussion?
I've got a question for him.
Okay.
The stone veneer on your homes?
Yes.
I noticed elevation A doesn't have any, and I would really like to see it on all your houses. Elevation B and A the same as elevation C.
Okay. Is that-
Something you can pass for you or try to be in the process?
That's all right, stones might come across.
As far as, you know, we try to offer a variety of elevations, and for those that don't have stone, we do that really from an affordability standpoint. So as was mentioned earlier, you know, one of the reasons that we've gone with this product and this lot size here, I mean, I think we haven't finished the elevations yet. We've built similar products, and we're actually coming out with new product for this and a handful of other communities. But I would like to say that we offer different elevations, and there are monotony requirements, and we have our own internal controls on monotony that we wouldn't allow to like elevations without stone side-by-side or across the street. And I can't recall what the county's requirements are on that, but I think our requirements are probably much more stringent than what the counties are. So my preference, or our preference as a company, would be to offer those elevations, but they would be in limited numbers throughout the community. And again, it's just to keep our price points down.
So what's your estimated cost to add the stone to?
You know, it really depends.
500 bucks, $1,000?
Oh, at least $1,000. At least $1,000, if not more. And that would be our cost. So from a retail standpoint, you know, a couple thousand dollars.
Still talking about-
Right, so.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, so we're ready for motion if someone would like to make a motion. Ms. Slatsay?
Okay. In the case of P16027, Saddle Rock, number seven, FDP, the commissioners have read the staff report. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments as set forth in the staff report dated April 25, 2017, and recommend approval of this application, subject to the following conditions, one, two, and three.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Sol, second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, if you could call the relatives.
Mr. Rubble?
Yes.
Mr. Raitt?
Yes.
Mr. Raitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rick? Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Raitt?
Yes.
So by a six-to-one vote, this is sent forward to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Skinner, did you have a few, or no, Jason, did you have a few comments to make before we are done?
Certainly, just wanted to give the planning commission an update on recent cases that went to the Board of County Commissioners. This morning, the Board of County Commissioners had a public hearing on the proposed wastewater treatment plant for the Prosper Development, which you may recall, this board denied the location and extent and recommended denial on the 1041. This morning, after a five-hour hearing, the Board of County Commissioners voted three-to-two to approve both the 1041 and the location and extent. Commissioners Conti and Jackson were opposed.
And was there any other updates you had, or are we done?
Had you received an update on the Broncos' proposed signage, the Dove Valley Amendment? After significant deliberation, I understand that it took a while, I wasn't able to attend the meeting. The Board of County Commissioners did allow the roof sign for the Broncos' practice facility, and I believe they also removed the restriction you had discussed about the lot size for certain signs. If it's any consolation, I believe that's the same sign standard that the City of Centennial uses.
I'm surprised they did that on the overhead sign.
On the roof sign.
Okay.
It took a while to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Rubble. Have a good drive home. I hope there's more rain. Put up a new sign. And the other new place for one of the- Well, if it is any consolation, it's not matter, put it up on your side. Hey, you're right.